I'd like to call to order the common council meeting for May 6, 2013. Can we stand for invocation?
Father, we thank you again for another day. Thank you, God, for allowing us to be here today. We ask you to continue to bless us and keep us, and we won't continue to understand what goes on, Father, but we understand that you have all power and all powers in your hand. We don't always understand what goes on or why it happens, but we pray for Oklahoma City, pray for those persons who are dealing with the tornado, pray for all the first responders, those persons that are trying to help, all those families that are concerned about their loved ones, they don't know if whether they're alive or dead. We ask you, Lord, to be with them and strengthen them, give them the courage they need to get through what they have to get through with. I ask you also, God, just to be with every one of our council persons, continue to be with them. Not only pray for them collectively as a unit, I pray for them individually also, because not only do they have to take care and watch over our city collectively, also individually they have lives, they have families, they have things they're responsible for. So continue to be with them, strengthen them, give them what they need, continue to give them the courage they need to do the job that you have said before them. We ask to be with all the staff of our city, be with our mayor. We ask you to continue, always pray for our first responders in our community who appreciate them and thank you for all that they do. We ask you to pray for, I pray for everyone that's here today, that's present here, be with them, be with their families. We thank you, God, for giving us another day, and we ask it all in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Everyone, the flag is in the back this evening, so I need to wrap the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Councilperson Smith.
Present.
Councilperson Payne.
Here.
Councilperson Zostavny.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Glover.
Here.
Council President Sellers.
Here.
Council Vice President Julius.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
The record showed that all nine members are present. Approval of the agenda. I would like to remove the override of the mayor's veto because that's going to stand. So we just need to take that off. It's number two under unfinished business. And also number three about the freeze on the credit cards, because we have a meeting about that Thursday, so we don't have anything new to say.
Okay.
Are there any other changes? Motion approved with changes. I have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda with changes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes to be approved. And the first one's supposed to be May 6, 2013. Yeah.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes from the council proceedings on May 6, 2013. Are there any other changes or corrections, additional comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes from the council workshop on May 13, 2013.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the workshop on Monday, May 13, 2013.
One item.
Okay.
Mine showed it was, it took place in city council chambers. I believe it took place in the mayor's conference room.
Yes, it did.
I'll be abstaining.
I'll be abstaining.
Do I have a second? Yes.
Question. Absent were councilpersons Glover, Owen, and Payne, but then down the line here, we've got a vote of nine to zero. That would not be accurate. Third paragraph.
So be six to zero.
Be six to zero.
Right.
And I'll be also abstaining.
I have a motion, a second, to pass the city council workshop for Monday, May 13. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Claims to be approved.
We'll start with the general claims. I do have a couple of changes to be made. I've got a hand-carried claim to Stephen Volker for a lawsuit that the city lost totaling I'm going to pay that out of Lloyd.
One more time, what was that?
Also, I've got two credit card amounts that weren't on the previous list. That total $80.42 and $353.11.
Whose credit cards are those?
Those were fire department. There was a misunderstanding between, it was for thunder items, and they thought Parks were going to pay it, but we have to pay it under the fire department's budget, and they can bill.
They can bill the thunders, non-reverting.
It was, there were two claims, $80.42 and $353.11. So with all the changes, the new grand total is $670,473.70.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the general claims and the amounts. Make sure I got this right. $670,473.70?
Yes.
I'm abstaining.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, one quick question. Out of the lawsuit that the city lost, what funds could we pay that out of?
We could pay that from Lloyd, was my understanding, because the employee was under the police department. We could pay it from EDA, we could pay it from gaming. Those were a few options that we threw out. I heard a couple of people vote for Lloyd.
I was going to ask the same thing. I didn't know if that would be more appropriate for gaming, because it was, I mean, it was a police department employee, but it's the lawsuit ultimately that was lost.
My only concern about gaming is the fact that we, our gaming revenue's down, you know, it doesn't recoup as fast, because gaming itself is down throughout the state.
It is.
And that's where we use our money for the flyers and our summer concert series and stuff like that, and $90,000 would be a pretty good hit. I don't know, what do we have on that, about $500,000, Amy?
$350,000.
Yeah, $350,000. And it's not, it's not, the revenue isn't there like it used to be, so that was my only concern.
The only thing I would add to that is keep in mind, when we made budget cuts, we cut all the capital expenditures out of the police and fire budget in hopes of, or in thought that we would go to Lloyd if we needed to pay any of those, so just.
And we will be getting a million dollar plus back after the bond is issued for the police station. Keep that in mind, too. Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Also got Parks claims and the amount of $50,000.
Oh, we approve those.
Oh, you already did?
Yeah, Parks, Amy, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
I had some comments for Amy.
Oh, okay.
It's appropriate now. Actually Connie and I met with Amy to go over some of the budget cuts and some things, because I was unable to be there. And as we were talking with Amy, there were many line items that were percentage-wise overspent, and what I mean, appropriate appropriations. What I mean by that, if we're a fourth of the way through the year, maybe the appropriation is spent 75 or 80 percent through. And some of those are easily answered, because if you have a big chunk at the front of the year, you don't have any more payments toward the end. But not all of them were like that, and I asked her if she could make sure and communicate with the department heads to really look closely at those and try to manage to that, and not to just assume that halfway through the year, or three-fourths through the year, that we'll be able to just make additional appropriations, because we've been having to cut and trying to really watch that. Some also had no appropriations, but we spent out of that, and that's, to be strong, that's illegal, I think, but it's not the right way to do it, to be a little lighter-handed. And so in talking with Amy, you know, we talked about that if there's no appropriations, or if they're overspent, then they're not a valid claim. It should not be a valid claim. And I asked Amy, I told her, well, we're going to talk about this a little bit tonight, but I ask her that from my perspective, when she brings claims to us, I assume she's gone over them and is basically validating them. And so I'm basing some of my vote on her, her word that yes, there are appropriate valid claims. And so I ask her that if we don't have the appropriation, if we're going to go in the red with it, or if there's no appropriation, not to include them in the claims, and that's going to require her and her staff to do their due diligence on that. And also I ask her that if policies or ordinances or resolutions regarding purchasing of anything, or travel, or whatever, if they're not followed, I know there's a number of ordinances that have been set up, I know the mayor had a, just came up with an executive order on travel or meals. If any of those things that are on the books now are not followed, that I'm asking her, as controller, not to include those as valid claims. And probably she'll get some pushback or some frustration from department heads, but the attempt is to make sure that we're just managing to the budget, because as we go through the year, things are going to get tighter and tighter and tighter. And anyway, I just wanted you to stay up there so you could, you know, hear that again, and then I wanted the council to hear that and see if you had comments, if you had agreements, disagreements, whatever, but I just want to make that statement.
And I totally agree with you, and we had similar conversations as well. So I think part of that is because of the transition period.
Well, there were some items that weren't appropriated and dollars were spent, that to that point, within the same series, we can, you know, move the money around. And I know for purposes of budgeting, we want to see numbers as accurately as we can across different line items, so we need to pay them out of the line that they actually pertain to, so that's what some of that is from.
Amy, well, at some point, I know there's a opening in your, for your position that you moved up.
Right.
I'm hoping that you will be able to get that filled pretty quick, so a lot of things that Nathan has brought up can be, make sure that we're covered on it.
Right.
Because I know you're running short now, but we want to get that resolved.
Thank you. Report of the clerk? Okay. Department heads, Chief Chris Grimm.
Good evening. I have a couple of things this evening. The first one that I'd like to bring up is, I currently have an employee, Ann Langley, who acts as my, in the administration's administrative assistant. Her current pay grade is AA1. Last year, we took a request to Liz Gross to have her job reviewed. I felt like Ann does a lot for us, keeps all of us straight pretty much the best she can, and she has taken on a lot more responsibility than what an AA job's responsibility is. So what we'd like to do, what I'd like to do is move her to an AA2. There would be no change, there would be no pay increase now, because there aren't any right now. So it would just be reclassifying her position from an administrative assistant one, which is currently a pay grade four, to administrative assistant two, which would take her to a pay grade five. Those are the current pay grades. The proposed pay grades that have come before the council would take her from a pay grade two to a pay grade three.
Does sort of job description include all her added duties or whatever's changed?
I don't think I could ever include all of her stuff, but yeah, yes. Most, all of her stuff that she does was included in that, that Liz reviewed when we did it, so.
What is her salary now?
Her salary now is $36,457, which is the max for the current pay grade of AA1, pay grade four.
So then this move would not?
There would be no pay, there would be no pay increase, because she's above the minimum for an AA2, so.
Right. It would open the opportunity for?
The opportunity for a pay raise would be there, yes.
Or we get back to that point.
Correct.
Ms. Glabro, our HR director's here. You concur and support the change?
Yes, dear mom, I'm going to change the battery.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're here, so.
She did a job analysis questionnaire, and thanks for making your decision.
Well, I'll make a motion, we go ahead and change her job description to administrative assistant two.
I have a motion, a second, to change Ann Langley's job position to administrative one to administrative two. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item, on April 16, I received an email from the COPS grant, people, that they were opening a COPS grant to hire law enforcement officers this year. There hasn't been one in several years. I think 2009 was the last COPS grant to actually hire personnel. I've been working on it with Delene. She's actually at a conference right now, so she couldn't be here this evening, but I know you all have exchanged emails with Delene and Ann and myself about this grant. It is a matching grant. It covers the cost of, would be four officers for our department. You can only apply for a certain percentage of your current workforce, and it covers $125,000 per officer over the three-year lifespan of the grant. Basically boils down to $41,666 a year per officer. They have extended the deadline because of some, because of some computer problems they've had, and then after, if we were to receive the grant funding for the three years, according to the grant, you have to keep those officers for 13 months past the grant expiration. One reason we'd like to ask for more is, I believe we're understaffed. When the annexation plan was done several years ago, in 2007, it was put into the annexation plan, the recommendation for two officers for every thousand resident, thousand residents would be ideal. At that time, when that resolution was passed, they did hire 16 officers to get to those numbers for the, for the numbers, population numbers for that time. Currently, the estimated population of Jeffersonville for 2011 was 45,497, and that's from the U.S. Census. Going off that, two officers per every thousand that's in the annexation report, that would be 91 officers. We are currently staffed with 75. I'm not asking for 16 officers. The grant will cover four, just to try to get us closer to those numbers, to where they should be. You know, we are understaffed, and I know you hear, you guys have heard it and heard it and heard it. It is, it is one of those evils of annexation and more population, more calls for service. But I'm just asking for approval for us to apply for the matching grant for the four police officers.
Chief, the $41,666 per officer, is that for, that's for three years, correct?
For three years.
And if awarded the grant, what is the deadline on hiring? How long do we have after the grant is executed, do we have to hire?
I'm not sure. I don't have that in front of me. Delene probably has that. And I'm not, I'm not sure, once you, once you receive the grant, I'm not sure how long the grant process takes, so it may be six months before that's, before the grant's even approved, so. But I can't, that's, you know, the federal government's funny. It could take, it could take them two months, it could take them six to do the grant approval.
And the deadline's been extended to?
June the 4th.
Chris, my only problem, and I support public safety, I do, you know, but my only problem is, and the negotiation team, you know, three of us are sitting here, four of us are sitting here, and, you know, we haven't got a contract, we have, you know, we're having trouble with budgets, we're having trouble with everything else, and I think it's great that we can, you know, apply for the grant, but we've got to have the money to sustain it.
I completely, I completely understand that.
That's my only comment coming from.
It's a grant opportunity that comes around once every four or five years, and so, you know, we have, we have to try to take advantage of it, and, you know, the buck stops right there, so, you know, that's, but not asking for it on my part is a total lack of responsibility for, for this police department and for the city, so.
I just want to bring that down, all that, that's all I'm trying to do.
I've got three comments I'm going to make about this. I'm not going to support this as well, but let me explain why. First of all, as a, I am fiscally conservative, and I want you to know that, and I think most of you that work with me know that when it comes to money, I'm frugal, but when we do it, I want to go ahead and buy the best and do the best. The $40,000 does not include the automobile and just, I mean, it's a huge cost. So number one is, I'm fiscally conservative, and I think, I would rather, I would rather, I think it's time that the city of Jeffersonville, government itself, tries to slim down and restructure whatever it takes to try to get more done with what we have. I do not support new taxes, okay? I will not purposely knowingly support any taxes in the city of Jeffersonville. We, just this year, we had $3.25 million we had to cut from our budget, we had to cut 2.50 from the civil city budget. We got to a point where we was getting down to cutting $1,000 increments. I mean, the department heads started off with their cuts, and they got us close, then we had to sit down, and I think we spent three or four hours getting down to that circuit breaker number. We got within $260,000, and I mean, we tried to do everything we could to try to manage this. We got within $260,000, and we ended up taking $260,000 from our insurance to put into this. And I voted for that, but I was cautious, because as you're aware, our insurance is four to $5 million, and that's health insurance, and that's going up quite a bit, but that's the only way we could give the department heads any flexibility, was to take it from insurance, and some point, at some point, we may have to go back into a fund and take money and recoup our insurance. We've done it before. I don't think this council has, Connie may remember, but over the years, the council has went to the insurance fund and put, and used that money to bail out, and at the end of the year, get caught. So anyway, I'm not going to support new taxes. If that ever gets on a referendum, and the public, majority of the public votes for raising taxes, I won't vote for it either, just so you, and one other point, too, and I think Dennis touched on it a little bit, our current employees we have right now, we're struggling to try to not only maintain our current level, but we want to maintain our insurance, and that's a big issue. Insurance is a huge issue, and I'm, myself, I'm really more concerned about our current employees, public safety. I want to try to take care of them as much as we can right now with the money we have. I would love to hire more public safety people, but we can't even, we can't even, we're having a hard time now with the circuit breakers to manage what we have. So basically, I'm fiscally conservative, number one is, I will not support new property taxes for the city of Jeffersonville, even if the city of Jeffersonville on a referendum vote for it, I won't support it. And two is, I want to do everything we can to take care of our current employees, and that's, that is tough. And you, you've went through budget cuts.
Oh, I know, I know. I know, and I understand that.
I understand that.
You know, I'm not asking for new taxes by any means. I understand that. I don't want any new taxes either, because I live in the city, so. And the vehicle, you know, I understand the vehicle comment. When they hired the 16, when they did annexation, they didn't buy 16 cars. They didn't buy any cars. So that's really what got us behind where we are now with our, with our vehicle fleet, was because there weren't vehicles purchased with those 16 officers. So I completely understand, Mike, I do, you know, and I know, but I got to ask, you know.
I agree.
I got to come up here and say, I got free money, and, you know.
That's not free money. It's not.
It's not free money. It's money that the federal government's going to give us to put more police officers on the street, so.
And my problem is, it's not so much what we're facing right now, because it looks good for the next three years, but none of us might be sitting on the council in four years. And then what we're doing is pushing this ahead, and our tax caps keep coming down, and we keep having to cut more and more every year, then they're going to have to try to figure out how to pay for these police officers. And we kind of ran into this when we were first on the council in 2004. We do not like to fire firemen, we don't like to fire anybody or let anyone go. I can't see us hiring three new officers or four new officers and then letting any of them go, and it would put that council and that administration in a horrible, horrible position, not having the money to pay for them.
Well, I understand that. I understand that, you know, also you can't foresee the future either, so, you know.
The only way, the only way.
The same in four years that there won't be the money there. There's, you don't know, so.
The only way we could get the money there is, like Mike said, to raise taxes. And right now, the county also is, we might be having a mandate where we're going to even, where we're going to be even losing more money. So those are things that we, we have to consider. If we applied for the grant, and you're applying for four officers?
Yes.
Okay, if we get that, accepted that grant, or whatever, if we got awarded that grant?
Right.
And the reality is, we can only afford, because, just what Ann had sent me, for one officer for one year, it costs the city $122,030.84.
Correct. That includes a vehicle.
That includes everything, their health.
Right.
It doesn't include everything. It doesn't include their workers' comp insurance, it doesn't include some other things. It's really closer to $135,000.
My question is, if we can only afford, may not be able to afford to hire any, but if we can afford to hire one, do we have to hire four?
I don't know how the grant, I don't know how the grant's set up. I don't, so.
And I asked the same question, from what I understand from the grant, because I know where you're going with this, if we could apply for the grant and find some way to fund this in the future, I think that's what Lisa and I are talking about. I think the problem is, when I read through the grant, when we vote tonight, we're basically saying, yes, we will accept, we will accept the funding. So if we were to approve the grant, then it's almost executed when they award it back to us.
Well, and the problem is, we don't even know if we'll get approved. I mean, that's kind of where we are. We haven't applied yet, correct?
Yeah, but if we vote to accept what he's saying, then we voted to accept it.
Right. We've never been turned down, as far as, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've never been turned down, which is a good thing, but we've never been turned down for a grant.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Over the next three years, which this grant would fund, do you know how many officers you have set to retire?
Maybe three, maybe. But, you know, that's, that's.
But this grant also can't supplant what you're going to lose. Your, your number has to increase by the number you apply for. So if we've got 70 officers and we apply for four, then we have to have a 74 officer staff. We can't supplant. I mean, I looked at all the angles, trust me, I've tried to find every way to make this work, and it's a challenge, and it really is.
I agree with a lot of the comments that are said. One thing that crosses my mind still is, when we added the other officer, I wish we would have known about this grant before we added that officer.
And this was after, this came after, so.
But it would have been one or two meetings, we would have known about it, and we could have saved money. So that, that bothers me, but I think there is a way that the assessed values could increase over time, and I think they will. That, I mean, I know it's, we can't foresee the future, and I think it's, the grant is a good thing for us to be able to hire somebody at a low cost. I couldn't support four, but I could support one. So I'm going to throw out just as an option, that we allow the grant writer to write for one grant, one cop grant.
What if we split it and go two?
We're just hard one. We're splitting it by going one.
Well, four to one's not half, two's half of four, so.
I threw one out there, because I didn't, I thought there's a number of people here probably are zero.
Right. Oh, I agree, yeah.
That'd be two.
Anyway, that's my motion.
But is that, will that work with what you applied for?
We haven't applied for anything yet. The grant hasn't been done. You can, you can apply, we can apply for up to four.
Up to four.
No more than four.
I see.
Because it's capped on how many current officers we have, so.
I see.
So if we apply for two, we have to have two.
Right.
I'll second the motion. And Ed's motion, can you read that, Vicki? And Ed's motion, can you read that, Vicki? Was it for one?
It was to apply for one.
Roll call on that, too, please. I'm sorry.
Are we voting for one or two?
One.
We're voting on his motion.
The motion is one.
Counselperson Smith?
No.
Counselperson Payne?
Yes.
Counselperson Stovny?
Yes.
Counselperson Gill?
Yes.
Counselperson Glover?
Yes.
Council President Sellers?
No.
Council Vice President Julius?
No.
Counselperson Owen?
Yes.
Counselperson Samuel?
No.
Yes, Karen.
Don't think we could have got to two.
We could have bargained, come on, Ed!
Chief, if I thought I could have got two, I would have voted no, so we could make the motion, but I didn't think it's going to happen, so...
All right. And the comment on Mike's comments, you know, I hope that the contract...you know, I hope I get somewhere with it. I know it's been a struggle for everybody to get there, but, you know, I appreciate the comments about taking care of the current employees.
I want to take care of...we've got excellent employees, and, you know, we spent three...you spent hours, and we spent hours getting down into that budget. We got into a thousand dollars here, and we got to 260, and we took it from insurance.
Right.
And I didn't want to do that, and I know Connie, but we had to do it, otherwise we'd have chipped away and, you know...
I'm an optimist, so I'm hoping it goes up. I'm like Ed, I hope the taps...they keep going up, so...
Me, too.
All right. Thank you all.
Good job, Chief.
Morgana?
I was thinking she'd be up here with Ann. Good evening. I'm here to continue talks that happened or started well before I joined the City of Jeffersonville. But this was discussed when you approved the BSNA software system about purchasing a employee time and attendance system, and that's what we're here to talk about today. Our current time system is pretty much all done manually. From coming in from the departments, everything is done manually, inconsistent in time collection mythology, no audit trail. It's error-prone on process for payroll deductions, and, you know, the manual process, just...there's tons of errors. So, the benefits of the systems that we're...we've talked...we're going to be talking about, whether it be Kronos for the Civil-City or Telestaff, which is our public safety scheduling program, would be for FLSA lawsuits are on the rise, so this strengthens our burden of proof as an employer. If we were ever to have complex union contracts and grievances, this would be helpful as well as far as scheduling. Lack of...and it would have functionality to meet all our accounting standards. It will increase the efficiency of payroll, and it will stop the errors that might be happening. There'll be antiquated...the antiquated tools that are in place is a manual process, and the managers and admin staff and HR and payroll all have their hands in it, so the more people that have their hands in it, the more errors we get. So, this will reduce...payroll inflation exists because of manual time sheets, and it will stop the errors, which right now, the only errors that are being caught in payroll, unfortunately, are those that are being underpaid because those employees are screaming. Anyone who's overpaid, they're not being caught unless it's glaringly overpaid. So, the first spreadsheet that we have would be for the public safety. The purchase price for the first-year investment, total outright purchase price would be $77,344. That would be the software, the hardware, the first year's annual maintenance, and the implementation costs. We would own everything, we'd have it outright, and then after the first-year initial investment, it would be just the $11,888 annually. We do currently have a 0% purchase option with payments over 36 months, with a six-month free of maintenance, but that would also include the maintenance cost, and because of rounding, it comes out to be slightly more than what we would pay if we bought it outright for three years. We're asking that this possibly be paid out of Lloyd with either a lump sum purchase or the 36 payments of $2,826.25. Now, this is just the public safety piece. Both Chief Hedrick and Police Chief have looked at this and gone through these systems, and they're both on board.
I thought...
Come on up, Ed. Come on!
The first demo that they did, we...I was not there. So, we set up a second demo, and the company came in and gave a second demo. And I'm just going to be honest, our...I've been with the police department 20 years, and our scheduling is awful. It's all done manually, it's done through an Excel spreadsheet, it's a shift command...actually, Kenny just left. They sit down at a computer with an Excel spreadsheet and have to punch in off days, and it's time-consuming. This program and the software make it automated. It allows our officers...it's a real-time deal. I don't know scheduling and staffing until I get to the police department. With this, I can log on from my mobile, from home, wherever, and I can check staffing levels at all times at the police department. The officers can check, can keep track of their own time, their own sick time, their own vacation time. They can monitor it themselves. Our shift commander spends a lot of time going through and manually pulling all that stuff out, and there are mistakes made, you know? Terrorists, humans, so there are mistakes made, and it will catch a lot of...my hope is that it catches a lot of our overtime issues that arise because of staffing issues and management of staffing issues, and it allows senior management to catch that stuff before it becomes an issue. So, you know, for us, it's like going from a tricycle to a Harley-Davidson. It's, you know, it's...
And Chief, you're all right with it coming out of Lloyd, because I'm for it, whatever makes it easier for you, but I know we like to protect the Lloyd dollars, so as long as you all are...
If it's there, and I know...I'm sure Chief Hedrick will say the same thing.
He's right there.
Oh, there he is. He's hiding. He blends. I'm sure he would agree to that their staffing is the same way, and just for the senior guys to be able to get on there and say, "Okay, this weekend, I know that on Sunday, you know, our staffing levels are getting kind of low, so we need to kind of put a freeze on some stuff." So, I'd be in favor of taking out of Lloyd if it's there, and like Ed said earlier, you know, with the bond issue coming back, I think Lloyd's going to have some other money coming there, too, so...
I think, just to echo some of what Chief Grimm said, I like the function of generating the reports. I think it's important for us to track, especially in my department, of where we are financially, overtime, of course, we have a history with that, of knowing where we are. We had an internal program, I mentioned this to you guys 18 months ago, or maybe 14 months ago, and we were doing internally, and we had a gentleman that was doing that for us, where we were tracking some stuff, and he unexpectedly passed away, and so that's kind of...now we're in a situation where that needs to be updated, and we don't have anybody that can do it, because all that stuff went down with his passwords and everything. So, it's something that's really needed in the fire department, the way of scheduling, vacation. I believe there's an app that they can even get on, the firefighters and officers can get on an app and see the availability of days as far as their days, but also days that are open in the way of the calendar. So, I think it's...I have no problem with it coming out of Lloyd. I think it would be very beneficial to my battalion chiefs and to myself in the way of tracking.
On this software, is it...is this software available from chief down to officer?
Yes, at certain levels.
I guess my question is, I know...
It can change your pay rate or anything.
Well, I understand, but I know for you, scheduling vacation time is a nightmare.
Right.
Does that...
Yes.
That's, you know, that lower-ranked fire department, that fireman, get to look in there and see what's available instead of looking at some crazy spreadsheet?
To be accessible by all the officers, all the firefighters will be able to get in and access how many days they have, how many...what days are available, and things like that, yes. But, joking, but they...there's limited access, of course. The admin will have different things that they can change and whatever, but every officer and firefighter will have access to the system to use.
And you, as an officer, can get on there and say, "Okay, next Friday, I'd like to be off," and can go to next Friday, because it's all real-time, so there's no delay. So, if another officer puts in for that Friday an hour before you, then you can pull it up and see that. But if not, then you can put in that request to your supervisor, and your supervisor has to approve that, and then it goes real-time into that Friday, and then it shows it, you know, because now, every time they make a change, they have printed out a schedule, so...
Has any of the council seen this? I mean, if we don't have to vote on this tonight, I mean, is there a possibility that...I mean, I'd like to...I think it's interesting, but I'd like to look at it a little bit. I don't...I'm kind of a little lost, to be honest with you.
Well, what do you mean, "look at"?
I don't know what...I mean, I don't...is it a physical...what is it? The only one that don't understand?
It's a software program where the officers and people enter a four-digit code into a PIN...a console, kind of like an ATM-looking console, to check in to say, "I'm here at work."
So, each firehouse or each building will have one?
Every computer can get it.
Well, there's not...
It's not a clock.
It's accessible from the computer. It's not a...
A computer, it's an iPad, it's whatever we want it to be. We've got it set up for computers and punching, but for the police, it's typically...and it does have GPS.
And with this system...
So, you can check in from home, this year at work, right?
Yeah, exactly.
From your mobile app, yeah.
Exactly. So, that's why we'll...GPS time is...
And with this system, we'll have accurate record-keeping. We aren't going to have some employee come to us and say, "The city owes us $77,000, and we don't have the documentation," say, "Well, no, we don't, and we have to pay it because we've had situations." This will take care of that, correct?
And this also flows directly through to BSNA?
Right.
No?
That's what I think's important, is that we're integrating all the software together, between HR, between finance, and between scheduling. I think that's the big benefit.
For the police department, Scott Oliver, who's one of my assistant chiefs, and Ann sit down, you know, it takes them two hours to do payroll. Right now, for an overtime sheet, they fill out a paper slip, and then it has to be signed by the supervisor, and that goes into there. Now, we keep those, but with this system, that goes away. You know, there's no more paper. It's all done electronically, and it's...there's an electronic...
It still has to be approved.
Right, right. It has to be all...it all has to be approved, but there's an electronic paper trail instead of an actual...
So, it might reduce staff, then?
No, why do you choose it? Two!
Just paper it.
It'll save our paper budget.
It'll save paper...yeah.
Scott will get other responsibilities.
Oh, no, he'll still have to go through and check it. I mean, it's still a...they're still...
But it's also real-time. Like, if a fireman doesn't show up, they have to have certain staffing levels. It's going to tell Chief Hedrick immediately that that person doesn't show up, and it does make calls out to the next available fireman or policeman that's on there, and we'll call them automatically.
I know I've had a lot of conversations, State Department of Accounts, and timekeeping. Is this software approved with State Department of Accounts? Is this accurate, and is this system fine with them?
It has been used throughout...they have 30,000 clients or customers currently. State Department of Accounts for Indiana, they use it in nine different current cities with public safety as well as civil service.
One question is, I just look at your pay schedule here. The first year is 77 and some change, and then you got the second, third year of maintenance fees of 11, almost $12,000. But I also see a lease option that costs us only, what, $600 more to lease it? Is that what I'm...
That was with the three years of maintenance. That's all three years of the maintenance.
So, we can pay it outright and only save 500 bucks, or we can lease it for three years?
That is correct. That's...we gave...we have those options. It's a 0% lease with three years of maintenance included in that lease. One of the two options.
Make a motion to go ahead and approve the lease option through Lloyd.
Second? One quick question. Amy, can that be easily set up to pad Lloyd in monthly disbursements?
Do we have the appropriation for this? Goes back to my earlier comment.
I'm sure it's not.
I'm sure it's not.
I'm sure it's not. So, we have to advertise and then appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to do all that.
But you can approve the subject to...
Change your time. So moved.
Second. Did somebody second?
Well, you just...I have a motion as second to approve the lease for the software purchase subject to the appropriation. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain, because I don't...I just...I feel like I don't...I'm not comfortable with it, so...
Okay.
First time I've seen anything about it, and it's $100,000, so I'm...
Okay. Motion carries. One exception. The next page of your document has an error on it, so I have redone the document. Okay.
We have two options of this one as well. This way, all Civil-City...all of the City of Jeffersonville will be on the same system. This is actually the Civil-City side. It's called Kronos, same company, just a different portion of it. Where the total software purchase, if we were to purchase it outright, would be $14,412 with hardware costs, which would be the time clocks or the touch terminals that we were discussing, of $21,570. Annual maintenance cost of $3,170. There's implementation costs and whatnot. If we were to purchase this outright, the total first-year cost would be $67,547. And then each year after that, it's 3,170. I have it split out between finance buying the clocks, and then the remaining out of the Civil-City budget, wastewater and drainage budgets, based on the percentage of employees that would be on that. The second column of this is an option that we have...oh, before I go, that first column, we also can get 0% financing, so it would be a lease payment of approximately...I think we said it was approximately $2,400. I can't remember, I don't have the exact figure, but we do have that same lease option available to us with this that we have with the Telestaff for the Fire and Police.
That's 36 months?
36 months. So, basically, you just divide that 67,547 by 36, and that's what it's going to be. Then, the other option that we had, we currently have where we could just pay for the clocks, which would be the $21,570. A word on these clocks. When I was in the City of Louisville, we bought these clocks 10 years before I started. I was there almost eight years, and they're still using the same clocks. They are very dependable and reliable clocks. But then, what we would pay, would we pay a $4,000 startup fee plus the $21,570? The only catch with that is it's a month-to-month lease, and it's $3.50 per employee that would be on here. At our peak of employees, that would be $16,800 a year, or 1,400 a month, basically. So, in the long run, we save over three years, we'd save $2,000, and then we would only, sort of paying the $16,800 every year, after that, we'd pay the $3,170.
Hey, I got a question.
Certainly.
With police and fire, I can see how that system's going to save time and money, because we've had several issues where we haven't had documentations, where we've had to pay huge payoffs when somebody leaves. How is going to this, which is adding into our budget, because we had Lloyd dollars for that, how is this going to save the city money?
Well, it'll accurately track everyone's time from, you know, I mean, everybody, it will track their vacation, it'll be real-time. It will, it will save on overtime, because we have, we have some overtime issues in certain departments that I've seen. There's also been some pay issues, when people leave, that they say they're owed more than we have records to prove otherwise.
And also, State Department of Accounts likes the separation where the pay is entered by HR, and it feeds over to payroll, because currently, our payroll department is all paid.
And all the hours and everything, and this will be a separate entry, this will flow through just like the telestaff would.
Why do, why do we have to have special clocks? It seems to me that when, when I come into work, I could log into my computer with a PIN number, and it would keep that. Why do we have to have a special clock?
We're having twelve clocks for people like, out at parks, animal shelter- Street department. Street department, not everyone would have access, everyone that would have access to a computer would be logging on that way. These are just for the outlying areas, parks, streets, drainage, animal shelter, those twelve clocks, so that's, that's what those twelve terminals are for. Drainage already has, they're the only department that does have time clocks. So I do know they do have-
So it's possible to log in through a computer, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
So is it cheaper to buy computers for these outside locations than to buy twelve clocks that are specifically for this purpose?
In some-
I mean, it seems to me you could buy a standard computer-
Well, we can do, we can do like an iPad kiosk at some of those, I mean, if they wanted to do the iPads, which would be cheaper than the computers, but we didn't know which way to go at this point. Time clocks are much more reliable, if something was to be damaged on a computer or the iPad, it'd have to be replaced, the time clocks are pretty durable.
Well, we could buy, buy three hundred dollar computers, that we just leave there, just for clocking in.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, if you're just going to plug in with a PIN, I mean, it's not like, I'm, I'm not writing a novel, I'm just putting in a four PIN digits, you know, a four-digit PIN, so.
So Amy, right now, are the department heads not using, of course, I only really deal, seen that done in the clerk's office, her employees do a daily timesheet. Are they not doing this daily timesheet, and the ones at campus punch a clock, or are they keeping accurate records that way, or not?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard.
They are?
Again, it's the paper trail, bringing in the payroll, it's all manual.
And it's all manual by the payroll department, where there's no separation of duties? My, my problem with the computers is if something happens, and one of them breaks, then you lose all that information, is that possible? It's real-time, it flows as soon as it's punched. If it's a computer- If it's a computer. If it's a computer, like they said, that's my question. It would still flow real-time, as long as it was hooked up to the internet connection, it would still flow.
And from what I'm hearing, even, even if you're at the animal shelter, there's Wi-Fi there, you, or you've got a mobile app, you can use your phone to log in without having this piece of hardware there, correct?
We could possibly reduce the number of units for clocks, but certain departments didn't want their staff to sign in on a computer like streets, or, I believe parks was one of them in the outlying areas, the pool, in the pool.
Okay, I, I was just, I'm just trying to-
But if you sign in by your app, then you could sign in sitting right here.
For me, but my, my question was, to Connie's point, if that computer was down, we have no way of logging, going to and from, well, if you're there and it's down, you could log in with a mobile app and sit here.
No, no, I just meant, can we lose the information?
Oh.
No, we won't lose the information, but it's, it's going to be one way or the other, they're either going to log in by computer, or they're going to log in at a terminal. We're not going to allow a lot of the employees to have the mobile app application, just because that becomes more costly.
So has wastewater and drainage been approached about this, and they're okay with these clocks?
Lynn, a chance open to it, we spoke about it last week, I'm not sure about drainage, but this was all presented last year by Monica with her software plan, and timekeeping was built in.
Yeah, I thought this was part, already included.
This is the second phase, we're just, yeah, we're just trying to make sure we have approval for it.
The first phase was included, but not the second phase, is there a third phase?
Yeah, that was just the-
Not to my knowledge. Seven hundred thousand, and we still got to keep paying more and more and more.
That was simply for, that was simply for accounting. You're going, this is a totally different system than just interface with that, that-
Now we get everything that comes with that, seven hundred thousand dollars that we spent before budget cuts.
Well, I do know in drainage, Monica did do a presentation, and they approved money, and I think there were, Scott, wasn't there, I think drainage already paid their portion, they approved and paid, haven't they? We approved, well, not we, but they approved. Yeah, they pledged twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, if I remember right.
So is it, I'm sorry, so is it your understanding that these outlying areas would prefer time clocks compared to PCs?
Yes, in, in discussing it with them, they would prefer them to have the time clock.
Okay, with that being said, of the seventy-seven percent that the Civil City is responsible for, where is that coming from?
We have two hundred and fifty thousand budget in the funding departments for software, hardware upgrades and-
So you have it-
We already have the money, that was in part of that seven hundred thousand, that's, yes, so that was, it's not extra.
So I will make a motion to approve, moving forward with this timekeeping hardware and software, considering the fact that we have to have some response back from wastewater and drainage, if they're okay with it, that's my motion.
This was a part-
Yes.
Where is this money coming from? We didn't touch that in budget cuts, but it was not a part of the original seven hundred thousand that we've already approved. It was a part of the plan, but it wasn't part of the dollar amount. And if we've already approved it-
It was, it was in that packet.
And if we've already approved it, why is it coming back?
We had estimates, they had estimates, and these are hard figures.
So this is not in addition to that dollar amount?
No.
Why, why wouldn't the, the police and fire, the hundred thousand or whatever was just spent out of Lloyd, why wouldn't it just add it to this as well? What's, what's the difference?
What, what is the difference between that seven hundred thousand and the real numbers that we have now?
The software itself was about three hundred thousand for BSNA, I think we budgeted about, maybe around a hundred thousand. For hardware upgrades, we had a hundred and twenty-six thousand, we had twenty-seven thousand for time clocks, for consultants to come in and help with the setup, we had fifty thousand, and we also had fifty-five thousand contingency, so the total project budget was six hundred and five thousand, four hundred dollars, and five hundred and seven is for the city.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
And all that is still in your budget, not cut?
Well, it's, the two hundred and fifty is for moving this entire year.
Yeah, we didn't cut it because we knew that there was expense to it, but I guess when it came up, it was presented almost like this is an additional, but it's not an additional, it's just a, a detailed cost of what it is, so we already have the money in the budget, we don't have to-
We don't need to approve.
It's already in your budget.
Yeah.
We're getting back to police and fire, is that part of it?
What about our motion, it sounded great, didn't it?
It sounds great.
You just took a hundred thousand dollars out of Lloyd, because it's, we got a lot of it, and we spend it easily. Amy, the hundred thousand dollars that was just spent out of the low-up money for the police and fire, why can't, why, what's the difference in that and this?
Why, was it, was it included in the seven hundred thousand?
Yeah, why wouldn't that dollar amount be part of the package?
I don't think at that time we had gotten into Kronos to know there was a public safety piece, and the Civil City piece.
But with six hundred and five thousand and ninety thousand, we're still under that seven hundred thousand dollar mark that we already approved, so then why are we pulling out of Lloyd, if we've already approved up to seven hundred thousand dollars, and we're still under that mark?
We, we wanted to see if we could be paid out of Lloyd, because it's for public safety, is that what they'll say, well, we have budgeted in general.
As long as the chief's fine with it, I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm fine with it. They're fine with it, I'm fine with it. Yeah. Okay, uh- Scott, did you look on this next ordinance? Okay. Well, we can at least look at it.
This is what, we talked about it two previous meetings, and there was just a minor- Yes, just to let you know, this is, this is proposed ordinance, two thousand thirteen dash OR dash seven. The original draft was approved at two prior meetings on first and second reading, and there was a few concerns and comments that a couple of members wanted to add to clarify a few issues, and I've added some of that language, I think, that addresses some of the concerns. The first thing was adding provision that in addition to prohibiting the appointment of any person to any city board or commission or city committee who has filed pending litigation, there, there was a request to add prohibiting any business or individual from contracting with the city who's filed pending litigation. So that clause was added in there, but then also to clarify that, first of all, that this ordinance shall not, shall not apply to any person who is currently appointed or currently sitting on a board, commission or committee, and also shall not apply to any business or individual who has a current contract. So it doesn't apply to anyone who's currently on one of those boards or has a contract. And then we also added a clause, there was a concern, just so we don't prevent anyone's legal right from filing a legitimate suit. There's a clause in here that says, after a person is appointed to a city board, commission or city committee, or after a business or individual enters into a contract with the city, that this ordinance shall not apply to either those persons or those businesses from filing a lawsuit. And then I think there just wanted to be a clarification, I know the question was asked, just to understand about pending litigation versus a prior litigation, there's a clause added here, as you see, that says the term pending litigation is defined as current and ongoing litigation, and does not include any prior litigation that has been fully resolved and fully settled. So, those were the, the additions that were made to this particular ordinance pursuant to some of the questions and concerns that some of the members had.
Unless anybody has anything, I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve this on the final reading.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty thirteen OR seven on the third reading. Question?
Scott, not to be technical, but I do, I was curious, if you have a, somebody that's sitting, that's, that's currently had a lawsuit against the city, they're sitting on a board, this does not affect them, I get that.
That's true.
If their term is expired to end at the end of this year, and they're, they have the opportunity to renew or re-up, is that considered a break, and they could not re-up if they're pending litigation, or because they're currently seated, it's a pass for life? I mean-
Well, if, if, if you want to get technical, the way this is written, if, if they're currently on a board, so let's say that their term is not expired yet, and the appointing, appointing authority, whoever that may be within the city, appoints that person while the term is still valid, they're still sitting there, then that would not apply. Let's say the term expires, and then there's an attempt to reappoint that person, and there's pending litigation, but if their term has expired already, then the way this is written, they're not a current member. So, if, if that makes sense of explaining that. Because, to be honest, sometimes people get reappointed before the term actually has expired, and then sometimes the term has expired, and then there's an attempt to reappoint them after the term has expired.
It seems like a lot of times we have, we don't appoint people to boards to like the first meeting in January, or we re-up them, or, you know, we never do it in, never say never, we don't do it in December for the next year, we wait till the new year, and then you appoint them, which officially, their term would have ended December thirty-first or whatever. So I, I guess, it's a technicality, but I was just curious.
And, and it's technicality too, and there's some case law out there that says in cases like that, end-of-the-year appointments, that technically, if something ends at like December thirty-first, and your next meeting is until a week or two later in January, that that's a carryover appointment. There's case law that kind of, it's like a savings clause to allow these boards and commissions where you can't claim that if a, if a term expires, and they act before, like a councilor or mayor makes a new appointment, that it doesn't make, their actions deficient. So even if their term expires, there's a carryover clause until the next available meeting to make an appointment, or to reappoint.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Good hearing.
Requesting approval on the third reading for the circuit breaker cuts that were passed on first and second meeting at the last, first and second reading at the last meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance twenty thirteen OR nine on the third reading. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Just a second. I keep forgetting to sign the bottom one. Kim Calabro. I'm on there twice, so what are we doing first? And the pay grade. And the pay grade.
First off, the pay grades, as the government sent to, to, to Dickie, apparently, when I got it today, the packet, there's two very minor errors.
Vito over.
But I'll tell you in a minute, I mean, they're very, very minor, so if you don't trust me, get your-
This is the five hundred and five?
Pardon?
Five hundred and five. I want it to be five.
Yeah, you too.
I was going to say, you must have the wrong phone.
Those corrections, they're, they're very minor. Okay, so-
That's the reduction.
Right, because I'm, and they're, and I can tell you real quickly what those changes are. On page one, where it says secretary receptionist under pay range one B, it had PT next to it for part-time, and at last month's council meeting, or the last council meeting, when Stephanie was here, and you approved that position for full-time, I took off the part-time. At the very top, I took off proposed, hoping that tonight this will, will get resolved, and we'll actually have pay grades that reflect two thousand thirteen. And if you look under pay range number five, for some reason, construction inspector engineer, which is a position we have, was not on the pay grade. So I included that. And then our pay range six, it said director of planning, and I just added zoning, to try to make all this reflect exactly what the job descriptions say. And then I went ahead and at the bottom, put today's date, it was confusing, because the other one had, I think, last week's date, I thought that'd make that a little bit easier. And I just finished this like, two hours ago, so Vicki, I will get this to you first thing after, I think Amy's going to send it to you.
And when we're voting on this, it's all in one vote, right, the, the pay ranges and the-
They're companion documents, the salary administration policy and the pay ranges are companion documents. And then we have the ordinance that also needs to be passed, because we changed all the pay grades, because we went from, we compressed the pay grades, so all those changed as well.
There's one small change I'd like to recommend, it's on page four, and it's-
Of which document?
Of the, the main, not the, not the pay ranges, but the other document.
The salary administration policy?
Yeah, salary administration policy, yep. On, on page four, second paragraph, it says, "At a minimum of every two years, or as business dictates, HR director will oversee the completion of an external market-based salary wage study." To me, two years seems pretty excessive. I know, from corporate standpoint, I've been through these, and it's usually, it ends up being about five years.
Well, I think that's what we put in there, the external wage study will include, there's a statement in here that actually says that, "Or as needed," I mean, it doesn't have to be.
But it says at a minimum of every-
And then the two years.
It almost implies that you could do it more frequently.
Okay, that may have been one of the pieces, that when Liz met with you all, there were some changes in here that were reflected after her meeting with you guys, so.
And I could just see, you know, us referring back to this document to do it again.
Well, we're almost to two years, too, and we're approaching two years just from when we started this, I mean.
Right, this never stops. I'd like, I'd like to recommend make it four years.
Four years? No, that's a long time.
Corporations I've been at, it's usually about five, six years when we do these things. It's not two or three or four years. I mean, there's always movement, and you, you pay attention to the market, but every two years is almost like, it's a continuing process. It never gets done.
It's like she's going to be back here next year to start on, starting all over again.
Should that language be added every four years from adoption, time of adoption?
But it also says the HR director can, can do it upon, you know, upon request. So if four years is too long-
Which we're kind of doing, as department heads have positions or redefine positions, or come up with something, I mean, we can continue to do that as needed. Right.
Anyway, I was thinking, as a reference document, it'd be good to say, okay, we don't have to do at a minimum of every two, let's make it four, and if we have problems, we're not hiring people, we have never had a problem hiring people, you know, but if we do have a problem, the, the HR director can say, hey, we're under, and this pay grade, we'll do a little market search.
And I guess that's, the piece I was referring to is, "At a minimum of every two years, if I put my glasses on, or as business needs dictate." So, I guess that's what I was thinking, where the two years kind of-
Why can't you distract the whole first sentence and say, "As business needs dictate, the HR director will?" I mean, because even if you say every four years, I mean, we're still putting our-
No, but still prove it anyway. I mean, I wouldn't go out and do this without-
It's fine, I just don't want, to me, this seems too excessive. Every two years, that means you're almost doing it continuously, with paying a consultant to do that. That doesn't seem to make sense to me.
But with the caveat, of course, business needs dictate.
And I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm saying, even with the four years, you're still putting a time constraint on us, that says, you know, we really don't have the money to do this, but our policy says we have to.
Right, right.
But if we just leave it as simply as, as business needs dictate, then there is no time constraint there, I mean, as an HR director, she could come to us and say, guys, we really need to take a look at this. I mean-
Would that be? I'm not in any hurry to revisit anytime soon, I can promise.
I know, I don't think we are either.
I'd like to get this resolved before you even think about that, but-
But it's in here, so.
Connie, it's point, point of order, I think, also, that Vicki's mentioned that this, the, the admin policy has not even been approved on the first reading. admin policy has not even been approved on the first reading. It's only the grades that passed on first and second.
No, they were, they're companion documents.
They were not passed, that was the motion made last meeting.
Oh, really?
Yes, the motion made last meeting, passed the pay grades only, not the administrative policy. That's correct.
So, we'll have, just when we do this, we need to do the other one as well separately.
Okay.
I mean, one document plants the other. I mean, you don't have one without the other.
Right. But that's how it was done.
Right, I understand what you're saying. So, what does that mean?
How do we reconcile that?
Pass them all three now?
Well, why?
You can waive the required for the three readings on the policy, if you want to try to catch up with the policy.
I mean, it's not new information.
No, it's not.
It's information that has been given to the council over, and over, and over.
Why can we not pass the pay grades without the?
They're companion documents, I mean, that one references the other. And it's not, it's not a new document, I mean.
How does the pay grade reference the wage policy?
You administer the pay grades based upon the administration and salary wage policy.
The way they have it written, I don't know if you necessarily have to do this, or the way they have it written, if you look at the policy, the pay grades are attached to A policy.
Yeah, they reference each other.
Right.
Not saying they have to do it that way, but they have it attached rather than. That's how they wrote it.
I mean, it defines what you pay someone, how you can pay someone, when, and when you can't pay people under certain circumstances. I mean, they're truly companion documents, and like Connie said earlier, this.
We've been going over this for months.
We have.
Yeah. And it really needs to be passed.
I mean, and speaking from a human resource standpoint, and on behalf of department heads, which a couple believe are still here, if they had any comments to kind of pass on or share, I mean, it's, I think it's time to.
Scott, can we pass the pay grades on the third and final reading, then make a motion to suspend the rules, and pass the other one on all three readings?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to pass the Pay Range Addendum A on the third and final reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass the Pay Range Addendum A on the third and final reading. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
However you want to word it, you can.
And I'll make a motion, yeah, I'll make a motion to, in anticipation of passing on all three readings, to suspend the rules, for the accompanying documents to the pay grades, with the exception on page four, to strike at a minimum of every two years, or, and leave it as simply as business needs dictate. That's my motion.
Do I have a second? Okay. I have a motion and a second in anticipation of passing ordinance number 2013 OR 10 on all three readings.
I'm sorry, I need to make a motion to suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules, yes.
But, and it's just point of order, but ordinance 2013 OR 10, that we've passed already, just took the third and final reading, is already taken. The slot, 2013 OR 10, is taken. So, if we do the policy, it needs to be a different ordinance. It was passed the last time with only one portion. It was passed just with the pay grade, so it should have never been passed.
It never should have been passed without.
That way, because they are one complete document. I don't disagree, but we just approved one, and now we're going to replace that one with, you know, see what I'm saying?
No, it's.
In a way, it's kind of burdensome how it's done, because they've got the ordinance approving the wage policy, which is Exhibit A, and then with the wage policy, Exhibit A is actually the pay grade, so you've got all these exhibits. So, I mean, I think you can clarify in this motion that, you know, that the wage policy is Exhibit A to the ordinance. So, I think you can clarify that.
As long as it doesn't mess up our numbering and our ordinance, and if somebody asks for ordinance 2013 OR 10, and they get two different ones, or whatever, because we just approved one on the third and final reading, and now we're going to do another one, same number, on all three readings. It's just, technically, it's not right, but.
Well, I think if we clarify the motion that what you approve the pay grades is Exhibit A to the wage policy, that's going to be approved on all three readings, the wage policy is Exhibit, or attached in A to ordinance 10, if it's clarified in the rest of the motion.
Okay.
But is there going to be a new ordinance in a few minutes, when I'm up under new business?
No.
Because that's what I have.
Yeah. Yes, that's a different.
Okay, let's get through this one. Let's get through this one first. Okay. Thank you, Vicki.
The motion is to suspend the rules.
The motion is to suspend the rules, in anticipation of passing on all three readings. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I don't even know where to start.
I know.
Can I make a motion to pass on all three readings? Orness 2013 OR 10, which includes the Addendum A, the pay ranges, with one change, on page four, second paragraph, "Strike at a minimum of every two years, or," so it starts as, "As business needs dictate." That's my motion. And I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2013 OR 10, that includes Addendum A. Any other questions or comments? I'm looking at you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Gee, thank God. Thank you very much. See you in a bit, two minutes.
That will be a mess.
Okay, then, under new business, we have Dan Williamson from Pro Media.
We're just getting to new business.
We're just getting to new business, I know. Sorry about this.
No, it's no problem. My son went three for four at the ballgame tonight, so I was, my wife was texting me.
And you were here.
He had a great game. That's okay, I'll be at a bunch more, don't worry about it. Hello, everyone, good to meet you, I'm Dan Williamson.
Thank you for having me.
Glad to be in front of you today. So, I think a few of you got my, maybe most of you got my email, I hope you did, and just some updates, thought it'd be good to just stand in front, maybe talk a little bit about what we're doing, and see if you had any questions for me.
What are you doing? I know.
Well, I'm actually trying to communicate the rainbows and sunshine of our beautiful city here in Jeffersonville, and letting the community to know all the great things that are going on, and of course, those outside of our community considering coming, letting them know what a great place this is to live and work, and I think we're doing a great job at doing that. And a lot of people are tuning in, so, yes.
I think you gave some numbers at a department head meeting, maybe last week or the week before, and I wasn't there to hear those numbers, but I heard they were fairly well.
Yeah.
They're fairly good. Could you share those with us?
Be happy to, yeah. I mean, they vary week to week.
Sure.
As all social media, you know, we're basically managing the social media communications of the city, trying to let the community know, not only what's happening through our calendars, and I guess maybe I should back up, you guys probably are aware that my company was contracted last spring to develop a website for the City of Jeff, and we were really honored to be a part of that, exciting thing for us to do, and we worked diligently to get the site launched, and did launch it last summer, and the whole goal of the site was to, you know, for a site to live, it has to have content being pushed into it, and then people coming to it to read it. And one of the things I've worked really hard with our clients is to make sure that that communication is ongoing, and it's fresh, and it's new, and that's what keeps people coming back to websites, and keeps them alive and vibrant. So, when the city contacted me in the fall, after your PR marketing person was no longer here, they asked if I could help with that initiative, and so, the plan then was to take on an existing project that I guess had been going on since previous administration, and then see if, could we manage this, and also, could we take on the new responsibilities of developing the content for all the social media networks, which would be Facebook, and Twitter, and then website content. And that's what we began to do last November, I guess it was. And so, in the last, I guess, since November, we've had 29,500 unique users have actively engaged in our Facebook page, meaning that they're actually clicking on our page for stories. That's over 184 people on average per day that are connecting with us, the city, through Facebook. 30,978 visitors, unique visitors, 24,000 of those were unique, have been to our website to get information from our website. Some 245,192 unique people have seen our Facebook posts, and that's over 1,537 each day. 122,375 people have visited our page, and saw the page and its posts. That's an organic reach, basically friends of friends, if you're familiar at all with Facebook, how it works. And so, my friends see when I post things, or I like something, they actually get a post on their page, so that I can, and you probably do too, I mean, you know, some of the stuff I really don't want to see, some of these people, you know, people take pictures of their food, you know, and I get to see it. But anyway, that's a little bit of, you know, so really, if someone likes a story on our Facebook page, for instance, of, you know, a new park, or some kind of event, maybe the Easter event that we just had, you know, they like that, and then all of their relatives they're friends with get to see it, too. Again, that's part of the viral nature of social media, and it has a very powerful reach. Let me see, we've added, what, some 668 new likes on our Facebook page, we're upwards near 4,800 now, likes to our page. There's 881,000 friends of friends, the ones I just mentioned. We've developed 54 new stories since November, that we've published to our Facebook page, and all of the virality of that is about 8%, which is a significant number. 12 new videos have been produced since November, they're on the YouTube channel for Steve Jeff, and we've, of course, managed the production management and content development of the winter, 2012, spring, 2013 newsletters, and lots and lots of work on departments' websites, and helping them maintain content. We've helped Vicki with her department adding and adjusting content. Although, we built the website, so it's got a content management system, it's a CMS platform, everybody within every department has control of their area, and that's kind of the way things need to be. Sometimes, it's complex, you know, it can be overwhelming, although it's basically, if you can use Word or PowerPoint, surf the web, you can typically get in there and add images, and, but sometimes, we have clients who just would rather just call us and say, can you add, can you fix, and we do, so.
Dan, is there a way, like, to put it maybe on our website, school's out this week, greater Clark gets out, Friday's their last day, summer's coming, people want to see, families are going to see what to do with their kids, is there a way we can have what's happening this week, or I know, maybe I'll be able to do it weekly, maybe, just a, hey, we got this River Stage event, just a one place that they could see, maybe when they opened up the happenings, or something, make it easy for families that they can click on, or see that, hey, we got the River Stage going on, we got this going on, the Aquatic Center, or whatever it is, to try to promote Jeff events, I guess, a little bit?
Oh, absolutely, and I mean, that's really, to me, the, one of the most important roles of the website, is that kind of communication. I mean, you know, the Parks Department has a newsletter they send out, they kind of let people know, they have their own website currently, although if you've been to it recently, it's not really up to date.
You see it on some of the things on Facebook, you see a picture of people, it's past event, or whatever.
And that's kind of what we do.
People like know what's coming up, and.
Right. We're reporting on kind of what's happening, although, you know, like, there was an event just downtown last week, and we let people know about that 10 days in advance. We can only let people know about things that we're aware of, and that's one of the reasons why we attend weekly staff meetings, and we are constantly trying to get in front of the staff, and saying, hey, we're your friends, tell us what's going on, and we'll let the public know, because we know they're going to come to those social media channels that we have. But to answer your question, absolutely, that's what we want to do. And, you know, there is, there, of course, is on the homepage, a calendar of events, and if you, if you're interested, it says, "City Meeting and Event Calendar," and if you can go into there, you'll see there's certain ones that are highlighted, other ones are not, and if you click on the highlighted ones, you're going to see what's happening on that specific day. And now, is there other spaces where there can be, like, you know, bigger, here now? We're doing that on Facebook, pretty regularly, but we're trying to just live, let these things, you know, as far as calendar events, happen here. I could probably build within, like, for instance, under the calendar right now, there's a nice big space there where I have the word Council Cam, and I don't think that's doing us any good, quite honestly. But, because you click on it, you can't get anywhere. But if you want to, we could put a little scroll underneath that, pulling some of that week's content, so here's what's happening this week in City of Jeff.
Right.
And I could put that in a scrolling kind of, almost like a blog kind of memo, right underneath the calendar, and that might be an interesting addition.
I think that would be a great addition, because we want to know what to do to kids this summer.
Yeah, I wish I'd have thought of it.
One thing that, one thing that I will say that I think is extremely important that Dan does, is he's at every Board of Public Works meeting, and as soon as there's a street closure, any type of repaving that's being done, when we had some tree cutting, anything that like that was going on, it automatically goes out. There's no, there's no delay. As soon as the motion is taken and is passed, he's typing it all out, and it blurts out to everybody.
We actually do that in the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it goes out, it's almost real time.
Well, and I know when I was on Board of Public Works, that's the first thing I brought to his attention, I said, the faster we get that out, the fire EMS and police, they need to know it.
Right.
So, thank you for that.
There was a closing, I think, of a street, but it happened at 7:00 AM, the meeting was happening at 9:30, by 9:40, it was out there. That's as soon as I knew about it, yeah.
And as soon as we knew about it.
Sure, of course, all of us.
I have a question for you about the newsletter.
Sure.
Do you do newsletters for anyone else, or are we the only ones you do newsletters?
Yeah, we do quite a few different kinds of newsletters for different companies, but.
Do any of them sell ads?
Oh, yeah, it depends on, if it's a commercial business, probably wouldn't. I know with the school corporation, for instance, they have people within the corporation, business owners like myself, who want to invest, you know, we're the guys that are putting signs at the baseball parks, and different places, and those people are typically really great about wanting to advertise, and even your website is a great place to sell ads on. We could create banners inside of your website very easily, and that could be a revenue center for you.
Yeah, we've had some conversations about our newsletter, because at one time, there were ads being sold, and it made the newsletter very relatively cheap, I mean, it was maybe four or $5,000, and now, it looks like the overall cost is like $40,000. Is there a way to, you think, to get that reduced by selling ads again?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or, is it, or, I'll just ask this also, is there enough value in having a newsletter versus all the social media that's out there? Because that question has come up, too.
I think, if you look at the demographic of your community, quite honestly, and you guys know your community, you're living in it, you know the people around, there are, all studies show, there is a good amount of people that are still disenfranchised with regards to technology. And I think if, you know, if you take this out of the hands of those people who don't have access to the technology that most of us do, iPads and so forth, then I think that's a disservice to the community. So, I would like to see you explore ways that we could help fund this initiative, and I know that you all have looked at this, of course, but, you know, on page eight, you know, it says here, this page, Storm HTO, if you all read the bottom of that, it says, "The Jefferson Water Drains Board pays for this space as part of the public education obligation, under the city's storm water permit, saving the board approximately $12,000 annually." Just because they're part of this, we're saving that board $12,000, so that can go toward your 40, and that's a pretty big advertiser, you know?
I can't remember, do you remember how much they paid for that? I'm thinking it's 500.
Yeah, it's not a lot, I think it's in the hundreds, but I don't know the math on that. But I was told it's somewhere in the hundreds, saving $12,000, you know, compared to what they used to pay. But, you know, the key to that, Ed, honestly, is having someone who wants to sell it.
Right.
You know, that's always the goal, you know, I can set up the mechanics of it, and even help you develop a rate card, and, you know, and give you a little flyer, but, you know, we all need to go out and sell this thing, to the business people that we know, thing, the business people that we know, and I think you could get the whole thing paid for, quite honestly, with advertisements. And we could really bundle this. I mean, you can, you can put ads inside your website, you can put ads inside of here, and what other medium that we have where, you know, these numbers that I just read to you are huge numbers, especially when it comes to local advertising.
I totally agree, it could be paid for, and that's really what the Communication Director was, part of what her job entailed, so I don't know who...
But to sell?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, it worked.
Well, I mean, you should do it, I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it's something that should be done.
Yeah, it got down to...
It's just a matter of defining who's going to do that, and what, you know, and if, you know, if we need to compensate that person, I mean, usually, salespeople make commissions on their sales, and, you know, if it's, I know, for instance, with, I'm on the Education Foundation Board over New Albany, and so, I just took it upon myself to, you know, hit clients of mine and saying, "Would you advertise on the school corporation's website?", just to help get that started, prime the pump, if you will, and that helped. But I'm looking at all the board members going, "Do the same," you know, jump in there, you know somebody, you know people I don't know. So I, you know, I'd recommend that, you know, that you either, A, decide, "We're going to try to do it organically ourselves, and we're going to reach out to people, let's make a rate card, let's, you know, we got some extra these printed, and let's make a push over a period of time and try to sell some ads." And I'll try, I'll try to sell ads for you guys, I'd be happy to. I have a sales guy, I'll put him on it.
It wouldn't be hard. We just take our list of our top 20 vendors and send them a note that said, "Would you do that?"
Foundation, I think.
They will.
Yeah.
You know they will. It's just a matter of somebody doing it.
I just think it's a, it's a, there's one thing I'd probably recommend, I mean, I didn't start this, you guys know, I'm just, I took this on, and I'm trying to make it the best I can. But I think you could consider, if budget is a major issue, and we can't, let's say we can't get the advertising that we want to help really offset the cost on the printing and the postage, which is the majority of your cost, obviously, maybe we could send out like a note card to our subscription list of 20-some-odd thousand, which is what it is now. What if we sent out a note card to everyone that receives this, or maybe in the next edition, we put something, an insert in it, saying, unless, you know, if you prefer to receive this publication electronically, it's available to you, we can actually email that to you, which is what we do for River Edge, their newsletter goes out and is an email, and it's actually a video newsletter, is what theirs are. But you could have, you know, you won't receive this again unless you, A, either sign up for electronically, or you send this postcard back to us saying, "I still want my paper version of that." But that is one way you could clean your list up, quite honestly. And I think your list, honestly, I just looked at it, I think it's old, it needs to be cleaned up. We just adopted that list, it was handed to us on an Excel sheet, so...
Well, the list was everybody.
Yeah, everybody.
I understand that, but everybody changes month to month, week to week. So what everybody was in December, when I got this list, is not everybody today in June or May. So I guess that's something we could consider doing.
Yeah, because actually, it doesn't go, I don't think it's mailed out to like the people at the houses, just like current resident, the way they're using it now with the PO boxes. It's just put in every postbox.
Right. So I think that's a great idea, to, let's solicit advertisements, and if you'd like for me to do that, I'd be happy to try to work up a, maybe a little flyer or a rate card kind of thing, create, you know, a mock-up of where would we put ads, where would they live, because that's what advertisers are going to know, and so, "We're going to charge this much for this page, and we're going to make, you know, an area here for, you know." So I'd be happy to look into that for you and give you some options, if you're interested in doing that.
I see everyone's head shaking, yes, so, yes, please.
Okay, I'll do that, not a problem. And what do you think about the idea of dispatching some kind of communicate, either in the next newsletter, or possibly as a, you know, its own postcard type of thing, to everyone that gets this currently, asking them, you know, "If you'd like to sign electronically, here's the web address, go do that, and we'll set up a form to..." Well, actually, there's already a form online right now to get the newsletter electronically. It's a constant contact email form that we have. So you can actually populate that database just by telling people it's there, you know, and then also saying, "If we don't get this card back," and we can put a return stamp on it, basically, and say, "Give it back to us." And then we would reduce our printing and our stamps and our postage by whatever number we get back. You could do that.
Yeah, they'll...
Would the number be 10,000? I don't know.
The only problem is, as residents change, that address...
That has to keep happening.
Yeah, that address would never get a newsletter, right?
Correct, right, if someone moves in there, you're right. You'd have to have some kind of regular way of doing this. And sending a postcard's cheaper than sending out a newsletter.
Right.
And printing it.
But Dan and I have talked about this before, and the biggest expense is your postage and your printing.
Oh, yeah, by far.
I mean, by far. And I guess it's a, what is it, a quarter, it's a mandate that the drainage sends out a memo quarterly, correct?
Yes, they have to.
So...
They have to do that either way.
Whether you make the newsletter 25 pages or one page of drainage, the postage is going to stay the same, correct?
Correct.
So, I understand where we're going, we're trying to make this cheaper, but keep in mind that that mailing, you still have to go out quarterly, drainage-wise.
Correct.
So if you're going to send it out and you're going to pay the postage, is there some information that we want to attach to that quarterly mailing that we need to get out? Because it has to go to every address, correct? The drainage port...
That's true, good point. We can't reduce it if they're connected to it, you're exactly right. I think the best solution is what Ed came up with. I think, let's give it 90 days or so, and try to see over the next, you know, between now and the next printing, which is, I think we're scheduled for July. If we can work up a rate card and put it in the hands of all the right people, and see if we can sell a few ads on that, we might be able to help, you know, help compensate for this.
They do have to send out, because we tied the two together on purpose.
Yeah, and that's exactly right. So probably my idea of sending a postcard out and going, now, although, that information you're talking about, can it be disseminated electronically, I don't know what the water or the sewer board's obligations are, I don't know. But if they, if they could, I guess they'd have to be some way of proving that those people, so I'm just wondering if residents opted in electronically, but then, like you said, if they move, you know, that's another issue. So, I mean, $12,000 of your budget is right here already paid for.
It's worth trying to reduce the cost by advertising, I think that there's value in the newsletter, and people like it, and...
Yeah, I think they do, too. And I think we only printed maybe 600 extra, maybe 500 extra last year, last time, last couple times, we've printed extra, and then we, you know, we'd like to get them in the hands of restaurants and different people in the community. Anything else, any other...
Only thing I'll add is Dan, or Diane, whoever comes to the Board of Public Works, every week is asking me, "Is there anything going on? Is there anything you need to share? Is there anything we need to get out?" And he has all of our email addresses, and I hope you all have his, if there's something that you need to get out, there's your opportunity.
Yeah, any of your associations or communities?
They could go out and, different media forums, I mean, I've seen it happen where it goes out this fast, or we work on it a couple days, and then it's sent out, so, you know, it's there for everybody's purpose, everybody's use.
If there's anything we can do from a story standpoint, or, I agree with you 100%, I mean, we don't always want to be working, you know, telling the story after the fact, although, that is kind of neat with Facebook, I mean, that's kind of reporting on things that happened, it's cool. And we're doing our best to try to find out the information in advance, so we can publicize these events and make them more well-attended.
Well, we have a lot of tax dollars going into our events, and we got a lot of free events that the taxpayers paying for, I just think we should promote...
Now, I'd say a real good success on that was the Easter event, I mean, we publicized that way in advance.
Well, you know, we...
And y'all had a tremendous turnout for that, maybe more than you wanted, I don't know, but that went, that Easter thing on the internet, when I looked at the numbers on the stories when we posted, the shares of those was incredible. People would see that and they'd share it, and then they would share it. So it looked like a virus, you know, growing, so, but, you know, anything like that, you all have, any story ideas, anything that's really cool happening in your area of the city, just let us know, me or Diane, it's dan@promedia group, or diane@promedia group.com, and we're happy to...
How do I get a phone number off? Y'all published my home phone, and I ain't going, probably doing away with my home phone.
That's just an email to me, and it's fixed. And listen, you guys need to go look on the website, I think some of you do not have an email on there, maybe you don't purposely, but some of you guys do not have an email address on the city's website under your council member thing, so go look and see, and make sure it's the right one. I know Inside's in the middle of changing right now, you guys are aware of that in June, so, you know, anybody has an Inside account like I do at home, that's going to change to Time Warner, so you'll need to keep that in mind also.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time, I know it's late.
Nathan Glass, Brenner Park.
No update.
No update, okay. Mr. Kraft.
For the record, John Kraft, Law Firm of Young Linderson Kraft in New Albany. I'm here this evening on a request on an alley vacation. Some of you said on the council, "When I was here in 2011, this is in relation probably best identified as Munich Welding." When Munich Welding originally developed, back in 1994, the city council vacated an alleyway. Subsequently, in 2011, we came in and vacated a number of public right-of-ways and alleyways. I'm not the real best colorer, but I will show you primarily what we have. The red outline of this is all of Munich Welding. What you see in the blue is what was vacated in 2011. And those were the alleyways and roadways, and then, kind of interesting, because when we did the title work on this, we found that none of those have been vacated, and for lack of a better way to say it, some buildings sat on those previous alleyways and roadways that had not been vacated in 2011. But what happened was, there are two subdivisions right here at Frank Avenue. One is the subdivision that is known as Beach Fair subdivision, and one is John Frank subdivision. Now, John Frank subdivision has a roadway which was vacated in 2011, being this wider piece of blue. But immediately above that is a subdivision known as Beach Fair. Beach Fair, when it was platted, had a 10-foot alleyway behind it that actually adjoined Frank Avenue. So when, in 2011, all of these were vacated, the one that did not get vacated was that 10-foot alleyway that is in Beach Fair, and on each side of that alleyway, that real estate is owned by the entities that own Munich Welding. That's the Ernstberger family, Ernstberger Family Trust, Campfire Properties, all of those are the owners of the real estate.
Can you point to it, because I'm not sure which one you're, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow you here.
And this green piece...
Okay, got it.
Right here, is the piece that we're asking to vacate now. And of course, from a notice point of view, as I'm sure that Mr. Lewis would tell you, that we have to notice anybody that is on either side of that. Munich owns this, Munich owns this, so ultimately, the vacation is this 10-foot alleyway of properties that is totally owned by the owners of the real estate of Munich Welding. And all we're doing is, as you can probably see by the coloring, as well as the descriptions, it's a jigsaw puzzle, and in doing the jigsaw puzzle, as the expansion is getting ready to happen at Munich Welding, where they're building another building, in looking at the issue of whether or not they have to obtain a variance to get a building permit, we discovered that that 10-foot alleyway that was in Beach Fair, that was not part of Frank's, had not been vacated when you vacated what you did in 2011. So we're here basically to ask for a vacation of that little 10-foot stretch that is adjoined on both sides of that by property that is owned by the Ernstbergers, Ernstberger Family Trust, and Campfire Properties, who is buying the real estate on a real estate contract, and they are the equity holders. So ultimately, that's why we're here this evening. We did prepare an ordinance that primarily deals with that, keeping in mind, it's an alleyway on a flat, but it is an unimproved alleyway, there is no pavement there, so it is unimproved. So ultimately, that's our request this evening, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, what I'm going to do on here, because this has Mike Moore, I'll just, no, what I'll do is that, and then we'll get a thing for Mike to sign it.
That's fine, that'll work.
Make the motion.
No, wait, is this a public hearing?
No, because Mr. Kraft is correct, that normally, if we need, he'd have to send out notice to the...
But they own all the property.
But if the commissioners themselves are the body landowners, then there's, you don't need a public notice or a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Can I ask Andy? Okay. Andy, you said you were going to ride out there, because we just...
Yeah, I did, but I was looking at the completely different area. I thought it was, I thought it was an alley between the houses between Magdalia and Perry's something, I don't think that's where you're talking about.
No, not at all. May I have my drawing back on?
Yep, yep.
If it's all, if it's all the same...
If it all belongs to them, it's not an issue, so, okay.
Make the motion to approve on the first and second reading.
This, what's ordinance number?
2011.
On second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2013 OR 11 on the first and second reading. All in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post. Thanks, Andy. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Nathan Samuel.
I've got to find my resolution. What's our next resolution?
Who?
14.
It's Andy.
I had, at our last workshop, or, yeah, last workshop, we had discussed briefly, currently, anybody wanting to put any public art on city property, there's no one place they need to go to talk about that. For example, if somebody wants to paint a mural on the flood wall, there's no one gatekeeper that says yes, and then guides them to that person. It hasn't been a big issue at all, but the more our art group starts churning, or we've got plans to do some things, I think it's very important to have that one place to go to. So I would make a motion that we approve 2013 R 14, which makes the Jeffersonville Public Art Committee the point of contact to go to if somebody wants to put public art on city property. And what this does is, it'll go to them, that group, and assuming it goes through there, if they need to go to planning and zoning for issues, then they're directed to go planning and zoning. This is the first step to move them on, so...
Shane Carbin is a member, he is a member of the art, of the, okay, so he's involved in the very beginning of any of these projects, to know, very helpful as a director?
We created, we created the art committee.
Correct.
How did we, refresh my memory, how did we set that up? How is that structured? I understand the director of planning and zoning is on it, a council member is on it, and then it's... There's three other, it's a five-member group. Names were solicited, if you will, from the, they have to have some connection to art, for example, Jay Ellis, he's with Main Street Downtown, deals with a lot of our merchants downtown.
Right.
The Dawn Struck, the high school art teacher is part of that, she's very invested in art. And then a lady named Melissa Dever, who works in advertising, PR for a company in Louisville, she's just very clued into arts, but that's how it is. Those are re-upped every, every year, annually, they will be up for, for the council to appoint. So those are council appointments? They're all, they're all council appointments. Okay.
And how often do they meet?
At minimum, monthly, we've met for the last few months, twice a month. We met today.
I'll second your motion, thank you.
And this is just for city-owned property?
Yes.
So if, if I'm, if I own a small park downtown and want to put up some public art, I would have to go through planning and zoning, but I wouldn't necessarily have to come to you.
It's on your own property?
Correct. Right, but if I was at, you know, Vising Park, I would come to you first.
Correct.
Okay.
Just real quick, I know a couple of you weren't at that workshop, this came up with Nathan, and asked me to draft it, so I did draft it, and at the workshop, just to make sure that there were, were this public arts committee, they're not just that unilateral control, making decision, that's it, agreed that. We also talked about that, you know, there's different boards and commissions that own different property, like Parks Authority may have property that this may be discussed, or the Sewer Board or Drainage Board, so this does say that whatever, the initial termination of parts, the public arts committee, that it's still subject to approval of whatever board or commission that may actually own the real estate. And then another point, now, for the council's sake, that there's some sort of determination that public, city's funds are going to be used. that public, city's funds are gonna be used, obviously, we want that approval to come before this council as the first body for the expenditure of public funds, so I think we kinda put some layers in there, where this committee just can't unilaterally act without anybody, without a check or balance, so to speak, so I think we put that in there.
Does, if, if we decide as a Parks Authority that we wanna put some public art at Vising Park, and this committee disagrees with that, do they have the ability to prevent the property owner from doing that?
I mean, I don't, I don't believe they, I don't think that's...
I know, I shouldn't have even asked.
I mean, I think so.
I know.
I think so, and then, but, but you remember, you have the authority to appoint the board members.
Yeah.
I mean... You know, I think the key, too, is, Matt, I think, it's a good question, but at some point, with a public, like Nahin Fieldhouse, for example, that's a, that's a Parks facility, and it was questioned to me about some type of artistic stuff on the boarded-up windows.
Right.
So at some point, we would probably reach to them...
Sure.
And, you know, I have an idea, or you have an idea, but to take it a step further, we're gonna have to go to some artistic people, and that, these, this would be the board we would go to, but ultimately, it's, it would be our Parks decision, but if we were, if we really wanted to do it, we would reach to them and say, you know, as a Parks Board, here's what we're thinking about doing, and it would be a joint venture, for the most part.
Call the question.
I have a motion, who seconded it?
I seconded it.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Oh, okay, you made it, okay. I have a motion and a second to pass resolution, was it seven?
14.
14. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post. Motion carries. Okay, what's next? Uh, Amy.
I'm presenting this on Kelly Phillips' behalf, she's out of town in a conference tonight. This is similar to what was brought before you at the last meeting, just, it's a letter going to the assessor and the auditor, asking to override the requirements to file the CF1 on tax abatements for three different companies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the letter to the Clark County Assessor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post, motion carries.
Excuse me, it's on one company, she only gave me one.
I only have the paperwork for one company, but it's on Financial Group and BDB as well.
She just, she only gave me one letter.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, y'all, we'll have to bring that back next.
What letter do you have?
I've got two letters.
I've got two letters.
No, you got two letters. One goes to the auditor.
The auditor wants to be assessor.
Yeah.
It's one company.
What company is that?
Well, I understand, even though in the package, you did a motion, I mean, you could do a motion that, for those two other companies, that you approve...
Letters similar to those types?
Identical language, opposed to both the assessor and the auditor, for those two other companies, and allow the sellers to sign that.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
My question is, I don't have them in my hand, and I don't want them to get dropped.
Okay.
That's for my...
Well, can you make sure that we get those?
I can.
I make the motion contingent on she gets it.
Okay, Zach made the motion, who seconds? Mike, we have a motion and a second to approve the other letters to the other company that needs to be sent out, contingent that Vicki gets the information that she needs. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, Kim Flabro.
What's this, then?
I know, right? I'm gonna comment on it, too.
Yeah, I mean, for real.
Somebody has to be here. Sorry.
Go ahead, Kim. Okay.
What number is this?
I think what I'm doing is actually, we're gonna have a new ordinance, from my understanding from Les, and the ordinance will repeal the other ordinance, the prior ordinance, and I know earlier, Nathan, you were talking about OR something, and I guess ideally, what I would like to eventually see happen is almost the, have the salary ordinance, the salary wage policy, and the pay grade should almost be one document, but I guess that's probably too late for that, I don't know. I've been, from what I understand from talking to Les and Amy, apparently, HR's gonna start maintaining and actually keeping the salary ordinance and making the changes to it, and not finance what has historically been done.
Okay.
So with that being said, what I did was went through, and we have a new salary ordinance, and what this does is reflect all the new pay grade changes, because the old salary, the former, I guess the current, the one we're using now, has the pay grades that we were using prior to tonight's approval of the pay grade. So these...
Reference the right pay grade.
Reference the correct ones that you just approved this evening. And then, if you need me to go through department by department and tell you any title changes or anything that's, that was a little bit quirky, there are only a couple things, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Changes are noted in this, correct? This document is correct?
Yes, this is, and Morgana and I spent about two hours going through it, Les...
No, that's not...
Looked at our revisions, and Amy looked at the revisions, so all four of us have kinda gone over it several times. Yeah. We need to correct the thing in the back, because I've got people asking me about it.
Andy, I was gonna get to that in a second. Section 2J.
No, this is H.
On the on-call pay?
No, oh, we've got on-call pay, this is cell phones, where the employees get $505 per month.
Okay, there's two things, I'm sorry, yeah, 2H, Les actually put $505, and it should be $50 a month.
Right.
And then on section 2J, we clarified in the old ordinance, it never said under the employees serving on-call and providing regularly prescribed service will be paid on-call stipend. The prior ordinance just said $100, it was never said week, day, year, so we clarified that by per week.
Kim, I have a question. Three pages before that, under section 2A, at the very bottom...
Uh-huh.
Talking about the police and fire, it says, "The chiefs of the police and fire, and assistant chiefs of police and fire are paid 1.5% and 1.4% of base pay." I think it should be...
I didn't do anything with this section, so...
It should be 150%, is it not?
I don't know.
Base pay? It's half again, base pay, is it not? Is 1% of base pay is like $600? I calculated that today.
I kinda like it.
I think these, I think that 1.5% is not right.
Okay, well, we can just pass this, like, on the first or second reading, and then get corrections made, so...
I'll check with Les, I didn't, I didn't do anything with this section, so...
Okay.
Motion to approve on the first reading.
I'll second it, 2013 OR 12, first reading.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2013 OR 12 on the second, third reading.
First.
First reading, sorry. First reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post, motion carries.
And then I have one additional request on behalf of the mayor. He would like to request a salary for the controller of $80,000.
Um, no. I'm sorry, Amy, but I've been through this with all of, I've talked to the council members about this, and she is right where she needs to be, I'm trying to find my sal, my section here. It's not like we don't have any.
Where's she at? What's her pay grade? Her pay grade is...
Under the new one?
Yes. We just passed it.
Eight or nine.
Director of Finance. She, her current pay is 68.
Eight.
68, and according to everything that Liz told us...
I'm not really sure what...
According to what Liz told us, she is right where she needs to be with her experience and with her learning this new job. Monica had 20 years' experience, Amy does not have 20 years' experience in this position. So in my opinion, I think she's right where she needs to be, 68,000. Everybody else, I mean, I'm not saying, I can't say no for the council, but everyone else is more than welcome to speak up. 80,000 puts her 2,000...
I concur with everything you said.
Puts her 2,000 above the 78, 2,000 above midpoint, which she said, "At midpoint, you should be extremely proficient in your job," and Amy's still learning the job. So that's my opinion, and I'm not, it's not because I don't dislike Amy, has nothing to do with that, but I think she's where she needs to be at this point in time.
Is it possible to, to get a vote for his request?
Well, it's on the agenda.
Technically, it's not on the agenda, so...
So we can't vote for it.
Okay, so I would, okay, so that would, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Sorry. Is that it?
I think so.
All right.
Okay.
So on the next council meeting, come back for the salary ordinance for... Yes.
Those changes?
Right.
I do, I do have a question, if we can go back to the side of him, but not, not really for you, Kim, but more for Scott. Under section 2C, under longevity pay, we mentioned, we referenced the union contracts and 1% of, you know, and what they pay for longevity. Do we, is this the proper place for it, or should we just leave this out altogether? I mean, the contract stands on its own, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Do we wanna mix it in here?
No, because that's, that's contractually bound, that shouldn't be...
That's separate.
That should be, that should be, that's a negotiated rate, that should be contractual.
So in the second reading, we'll...
Take 2C.
I'll probably take it out.
I see the point, I guess I have to be in there knowing the pain, but I think it just should say subject to these...
Just reference the contract.
Reference contract.
We'll change that next.
Yeah, I can reference contract, but logging that in.
Right.
Because contract changes.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You came, you came, said she's got a good job.
Move along.
Les Merkley, and I think Andy Crouch is filling in for Mr. Merkley tonight.
Andy, wake up. We're finally to you.
Hello.
Hello.
We are requesting the vacation of two right-of-ways, Mohawk Drive and Howell Avenue tonight. We've, I've been working with them for probably close to a year now, they came to board a public works sometime last year. There is a, there is a portion of both of these roads, Howell and Avenue, that are dead-end, and the right-of-way goes past the unimproved portion of the roadway, and they have been maintaining it, the homeowners on either side of the right-of-way have just been maintaining this property, and they've asked that we vacate that so that they could take ownership of what they've been maintaining.
Whose district is that?
Is it yours, Lisa? What's the road?
Howell, Gilmore, Howell, Mohawk, off Charleston Avenue there.
Uh, that's you, Ed.
Ed, you don't go down that far, do you?
He doesn't, huh?
With the new, with the new drawing, it probably is me.
Are you serious?
In this ordinance and so forth...
Nobody said anything to me about it.
Is this the one that goes...
Did we receive the cooperation from the evening news that this ran? Because technically, on something like this, it has to run these 10 days before the hearing. Usually, they mail that back to someone, to say whoever sent the advertisement, does anyone know?
I don't ever get them, so...
Okay. I understand, so, I mean, the procedure on this...
Corporation Council.
Open up a public...
Yeah, it's a public hearing, that's something.
Usually, we have the proof of publication, is what they call it, so whatever action we take, if we approve this, I think, I would say in the motion, that it's still subject to, that we have the affidavit of proof of publication from the evening news, just to cover ourselves.
As point of order, too, doesn't, don't the vacations only take one reading?
That is correct, vacations do.
So the one earlier with Kraft, the Kraft did, somebody said first and second, but that was it.
It was it, yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda like a planning and zoning stuff.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
It's similar to planning and zoning, where it's just, yeah.
I just make sure.
So we have a public hearing, is there anyone here to, I'm thinking, anyone here to speak on this?
Somebody said they knew where the street was.
Are you looking for...
It's a public hearing, anyone, because they had to send out notices on these.
Yeah, for work.
To speak for or against this? No?
I've got a question, on...
Okay, public com, public hearing is over, okay, I'm gonna go.
On the, I'm, um, on these, Andy, if we're vacating that, then how do we split, how do we allocate their property?
They get split right down the middle. The right-of-way get split right down the middle, and...
To both the property owners.
Half and half.
By statute, by statute, two halves goes to one side, and one goes to the other.
Would they be responsible to split the cost of a surveyor to come in and dissect that?
We've already, uh...
Has it already been done?
That's already been done. Lincoln Baker's already been, has already done that, and I believe that's in the documentation that you have. Should be, there should be a surveyor exhibit.
I don't see, so basically, but I mean, it's, it's split down the middle, and then it goes on their individual deeds and all that stuff, for the future.
That's correct.
Technically, technically, the burden actually is on the property owner, who's leading whatever half their deed. Once this ordinance is passed and signed, therefore, burden, take that as its management support.
But the people...
So then it's, so then it's on record, technically.
But the thing is, unless that is actually recorded, this is a non-taxpaying piece of property, and once you split it, and it becomes part of Lot 4 or Lot 1, then they have to pick up the taxes on that piece of property.
Exactly, that would be correct, as I understand it.
Probably not much, but it did be...
Whether we assess or increases or not.
Right, but it still has to be recorded to show that, so when they ever sell the property, it shows that they own that piece of property.
Sure.
So if they don't do it, it will hurt their sale later, maybe.
Well, I mean, there's still an argument that if you pass it, it's still their property, it's affecting and recording it.
I would say if they requested this, they'll probably pass it.
Yeah, because they're already taking, they're already taking care of the property now.
They've requested the vacation, so I would assume they're gonna go ahead and have it recorded.
Well, I think, well, I'd say, I don't know if the property owners are here, but a lot of times, they forget to do that, once the ordinance is passed. It's not our burden to take it, record it, or...
You're not gonna forget, are you?
That's their burden of duty, once this is passed, they need to get their own copy and take it, get it recorded, or quote it.
Not for us, we don't need to worry about that.
All right.
If it passes, you're free to take it and record.
Well, I'm just telling you that's...
No, I know, but that's what Les put in.
Yeah, that's, because we're technically, we're not receiving the property, usually that, that's the burden of a person being that property, gaining that title, once, all we're required to do under statute is to pass it, it's really their burden to take it and get it recorded.
Do you wanna change that?
Yeah, I think we do need to, or you take that out, and one thing, it says clerk treasurer.
Okay, so, moving on.
What's the ordinance number?
13 is for Howell.
Okay, I gotta make sure I've got the right one.
I'll make a motion, we pass 2013 OR 13, right?
Yes, sir.
And that we change the wording, so that, I didn't see where it's at.
It's at the very last paragraph.
Select.
On the first page.
Wait, first page.
First page.
That the owners are required to record the, record, I guess, the deed, is that what it's called?
Well, record the ordinance.
Record the ordinance.
A second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 13 OR 13 with the removal of the clerk treasurer and putting in the words owners are instructed to take the copy and record it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post, motion carries.
Does that address agenda items 7 and 8?
Nope.
No.
That was just 7.
7, you're up again.
Okay. Listen, I guess it's, they are right next to each other, so that's...
Motion to approve 2013 OR 14 with, on the first page, clerk treasurer removed, replaced by owners to record.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 13 OR 14 with the word clerk treasurer being replaced with the word owner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post, motion carries.
Thank you.
And Mr. Merkley, a resolution of declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures, and he's not here.
Nobody's here to present, so...
Can you, can you explain this, Scott?
The only thing that I know here is that we need to show our, like, ice and weather in regard to one of the procedural requirements going forward with the bond issue for the police station, this was prepared by Ice and Weather.
Do you know if this is time-sensitive?
I think so.
Yeah, my understanding was, I do believe it's time-sensitive.
Time-sensitive.
They're not here to present, how is time-sensitive it?
Yeah, well, I don't think she should've been here.
See, this is an issue. We just, you know, approved arrays for our corporation council and we haven't seen them since. We don't have a representative from the administration. How can we vote on these things without any explanation?
Motion to table then.
Second.
Have a motion seconded table, resolution 2013. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. What will this resolution be, Vicki?
13.
13?
No, wait a minute. Hold on a minute. I'm sorry, 15.
15? Okay. Public comment. We have one somewhere. Sharon Hilton.
Okay, I'm, I, my name is Sharon Hilton. I'm an animal advocate that are known as Humaniac. And I just want, I'm here for two reasons. It's to compliment you and to save you some money. How do you like that concept?
Don't happen often.
My first compliment is, it's incredible that you all have supported the shelter and the director the way you have, and for the mayor to have kept her in place when he came into the, this woman has, has all the credentials to run a good shelter. She is very big on two very important concepts in the animal world. That is spay and neuter and good adoptive elements. Spay and neuter is very important to our whole society. We, I did a study about five years ago, for five years of the, all the kill shelters in this area. And we kill about 35,000 animals annually in four shelters. That is because people don't spay and neuter and then they dump their animals. So anyway, she, she's very big on this whole concept. And she's also assembled a team of wonderful people out there who are actually trained to take care of animals. I mean, this whole thing is, is a revolution from what the shelter's been for 30 years. So I just, and how do I know all this stuff? I don't have any credentials in shelters, but I have a degree in biology and in medical technology. But for 40 years, I've been adopting, fostering, volunteering, funding, working in every aspect of that field that I could as an avocation. So I do have some. And then I did, when we started this low-cost spay-neuter group about 10 years ago, a bunch of activists and vets, thanks to a small grant from Mr. Jones Foundation, I got to do some site visits across the nation to see animal shelters. And honestly, this one ranks way up there. So thank you so much for being so supportive and thank the mayor for being smart enough to keep her. I know they're currently in the process of finding a new director. And the hope is that it will be someone with the same philosophy and the same direction, because this has worked beautifully. Okay, now I want to save you some money. I go to the shelter every week and I drive past that ragtag sign that is falling down and hardly readable and not noticeable. And I would like to replace that sign at my expense. Now, I understand, I've had good talks with Zach Payne and Ed C. and Brian and Dennis. And I understand that there was something in the works to have a good sign. That sign has been in the works for a long time. And it's not happening. And really, you can't, some people can't even find the shelter. My wish is to replace it with a sign that's exactly like this one on 10th Street. Have you all seen that sign that says adopt pets here? I got that for APA. It increased their adoption rate by 20%. So it does work. It's very noticeable. It's very readable. It's very direct. And I don't know, Brian brought up a very interesting thing. He said, well, if down the road, money came out of the sky and we could get this wonderful new sign, which is between $10,000 and $15,000, which is, I mean, that would pay for another person to work at the shelter part-time. That, to me, as a taxpayer, is not wise. And, you know, it's, excuse me, at this moment. So, and I've heard the talk of your tax, you know, you don't want to raise taxes and you've had to cut your budget back. Well, let me help you with this. I can get the sign made and put up within a week after you all give me, and all the proper authorities give me the authority to do it, and the signage, you know, everything on the sign for $800. Now, I'm not wealthy, but I'm very generous. So I would love to do that. I hope you all will all agree that it's a good idea. If you have any questions about the sign, go out here on 10th Street as you're going east. It's on the left, just the other side of the quadrangle. It's a good sign. Now, does anybody have any questions? Besides, when am I going to shut up?
No, I mean, I was trying to picture the sign. I have to go.
It's a white sign.
White signs, probably 28 by 28. It's a rather.
And it's about this tall. It's not, but it's.
Does it fit our zoning code?
I mean.
I would think it did. If it's on 10th Street, I would think it met our zoning code. I mean, it's.
Oh, yes, it did. Yes. I went through all the proper channels to get that done. But I don't know how the city feels about the signage.
I spoke to Ms. Hilton. She came to our Board of Public Works again, and we talked about this. And I told her my biggest concern was, A, I would hate for her to spend her money for a sign and then us put up a new sign. And I just felt that I didn't want to offend her by her spending her own money to put up the sign. We talked about possibly if, if we went ahead and put up our sign, we could take her sign down and move it further down the road, closer to the bridge. Connie brought up the point tonight that we don't necessarily know that that's our property. We would have to go through planning and zoning to find out if that's our property, if we can even put it there. So, you know, I, I agree with her. I mean, she's bringing forward a great suggestion. She wants to spend her money to put up a sign, just like the one we have here. We just need to find the proper channels. Right.
Well, I, like I said, I want to thank Dennis and Brian and Ed C. and particularly Zach, who's educated me about how to get through this. And I'll do whatever.
My other comment would be, I mean, it obviously has to go planning and zoning and fit that criteria. But in different departments, we have, you know, colors and we try to be consistent with a certain theme. And we need to make sure that would be consistent with our animal shelter. And if, if the paint colors has to be a little bit different or something, it just needs to be a consistent look.
Would that, when we get our new animal director, animal shelter director, would that be one of her roles or his roles to get with her and incorporate the sign and her sign and colors and put that package together?
Great, but when will that happen?
It should happen. I would think any minute.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean.
Yeah, but to get on planning and zoning, she won't be able to get on for 30 days.
Right, that's true.
I, I go to the animal shelter every week. And I do try to get feedback from everybody. And I'll have to tell you, communication between every entity in this government and the animal shelter is not good. Nobody really knows what's going on a lot of the time. And I mean, we need a liaison between the shelter and, and whoever.
I think what I, what I heard from Ms. Hilton the other day was the fact that she's fine and dandy with us putting up a sign, but right now, we're missing people that are passing by the animal shelter that don't, that don't know they're there and don't know how to get back there to adopt pets and things like that.
We already said it. And I mean, you all know, you've been there.
There are other options. We might be able to get a temporary sign permit, which you can do too, through this, go ahead and take that one down. If we could get that one up, just temporarily until we can get our sign put up. We could do that as well. And that could go, that, that way you wouldn't have to go through the next planning and zoning meeting.
Right.
But we would have to get the permit. We could do that. City could do that. Ask Shane about it.
If you call the temporary sign.
Can I do that in the Board of Public Works?
You could talk to Shane about that in Board of Public Works, yeah.
Okay. And I guess what I need to go.
Okay, I guess what I need from you all is, you're all's okay in moving forward with getting that, that temporary sign permit. And if that's the case, if you all will give me that okay, then I'll do it at the Board of Public Works Wednesday and we can have you an answer then.
Do you want me there?
You know what? You've seemed to have been at every other meeting. Why not come Wednesday?
Oh, and I love, I love.
So you've only been here two and a half hours tonight. I mean, what's another 15 minutes in Board of Public Works?
Yeah.
No, it's totally.
Yes, but it's, it's all for those who cannot speak, the animals.
My, my concern is that she spends, it's a very gracious offer, 800 bucks. But then if, if the intent is to, to not use that sign, if we're doing something temporary, spend, you know, an eighth of that and buy a banner that wrap around a current sign that looks very nice.
No, no.
No.
And maybe, we need to look at the space where it's going to be moved to. That's something you need to bring up at that meeting. And maybe it needs to be smaller. If he goes look and look at that property. I don't know how much leeway there is between easement between the street. It might have to be smaller than the one that she has.
What I would do is, I would check with.
Why would it have to be smaller?
I would check with Shane to make sure that sign that you have right there will fit on that property and it's okay to put there. And if it's okay to put there.
Thank you. That's what we're checking on.
And then if we do put up a new sign, what I will make sure is, if we have to relocate yours down closer to the bridge, do we have the property there to do that?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Because even the people at the shelter have said, they wish there was a sign down there by the bridge, because you get back there and there's all these things and you can't even see the shelter.
Right. You're correct.
Is that sign one-sided or two-sided?
Two-sided.
Okay, perfect, okay.
And, I mean, that's a million dollar facility. It ought to be treated as such. My next project is the bridge. And Mr. Crouch is trying to research that for me.
Right, to find out who owns the bridge.
Who really owns that bridge?
I will, I will be there Wednesday morning and we'll figure something out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for your good work.
Thanks for waiting so long.
Okay, council comments. Councilperson Smith?
Just two things quickly. Clinton Decker is a project manager for the police department building. And I've asked him to come before our next council meeting. So he'll be at 6 o'clock before our 7 o'clock meeting. And he's a project manager and he's got all the numbers, prices, because I think most of you are aware. We went, just by reading by the paper, we went from over $7 million to $12 million. And so anyway, he is going to have a, a presentation for us before that meeting. So if you have any questions about the building and costs and what's went up, what's went down, I think if you're all open to that, I'd like to have him here. I talked to him today and he said he would be more than happy to stop in and update us on that, if that's okay with you guys.
Good.
Okay. So we'll advertise for six, yeah. And I went to a marina meeting. I know most of you all, or if you're not aware, they had a marina meeting down on, on the river stage. It was very well attended. It was a full house. I don't know how many chairs they had, but it was standing room only. And it went well. And I think, the reason I think it went well is the people that were there from the current boaters that had been there for, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, plus a lot of the homeowners were there. And they asked a lot of pretty tough questions. And the city didn't have the answers for their questions. And the reason I said I think it went well is because now we're starting to work together to resolve some of these questions. An example would be, what would it cost to put a boat down there? Well, if you, I called a marina to get some current pricing, but they didn't have an answer for that. So now there's a question the next meeting we have, they will have. So there was a lot of good questions and there was a lot of unanswered questions. But that's going to lead to a great second meeting, I believe, with the neighbors and the boat owners and, because it's going to be a huge project. I think you've noticed with the cost of earth, with the soccer, I think your, our soccer thing we're putting together, I think you're going to find a pretty big cost of that as well because of earthwork and excavating and dirt. I think unfortunately, that's going to hit us there. The big question will always lie is, once you bond it and redevelopment builds it, and they hand this piece over to the parks authority, we have to manage it. And the cost is going to be huge. So anyway, but it was a good meeting. And everybody did well and well attended. So I hope our second meeting, we won't have a lot of the answers, but it went well. That's all I've got. Thanks.
No comment.
Does this call me?
No comment.
Ms. Gil.
I have a few quick things. This is Police, Fire and EMS Appreciation Week. And of course, we have Matt Owen that serves in Fire and EMS and my husband that serves. And I also want to publicly thank Major Lynch who's in the back. Thank you for all you do and especially going above and beyond and always being there to help me. He helped in our block watch training. He spoke at our J&amp;L I. He did absolutely wonderful job. I really appreciate you and being there for me. And also Friday, I'm going to let, Nathan will probably speak more, but I just wanted, I attended the arts exhibit Friday night that was down at the Bells. I am blown away by the talent we have coming out Jeff Hyde. I just wanted to say that. I'll let Nathan speak on that. And also, when you get a chance, go down to Water Park. Still Dynamics, once again, partnered with City Pride. And we had some students went out and did a garden down right by the statue. And it looks awesome. And I just want to publicly thank them, Still Dynamics, for once again, the company that's really supported the city. That's all I have.
Councilperson Glover?
Nothing.
Councilperson Joy.
I got a couple of things. I went to the art exhibit too. And I will tell you that it was quite a show. And to think they should have been professionals or college students. But very impressive. I also went to the marina meeting with Mike. I had to leave a little early. But I do agree. I think it's going to be a, a good, a good start to, to see if we can accomplish what, what we're wanting to accomplish. The other thing, I'm going to hand these out. If you all would pass them down. It's a handout on the Wellness Coalition of Southern Indiana. And I think next month, they are going to come and present and ask us to become part of this. I know that Clarksville, Charlestown and New Albany are already part of it. It kind of gives you a chance to read through this, look through it, and kind of familiarize yourself with what they're trying to do. And I don't know, I was just trying to get you the information a little bit early so that you could look at it before the next meeting. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilperson Owen?
Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to publicly thank the mayor for his veto of 2013 R7. And then thank the entire council for allowing that veto to stand tonight. And then secondly, I wanted to ask if it would be possible or if it's necessary for the council to collectively through Ms. Sellers, send a request officially to the mayor's office to see if we can have a representative of the administration come to council meetings? It's been frustrating the last couple of meetings, not having a member of the administration to ask for clarification or ask for information from. I don't know if that needs to be a motion or if I, we can even make that motion. But a formal request for representation.
When they have something, especially when they have something on the agenda.
If it's on the agenda, right. I mean.
I'm good with it if you need.
I don't know if that's sort of the motion. I mean, if you're going, well, if you're going to direct like a letter to be signed on behalf of.
I don't think so. I think we just need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all.
I think your tabling of the issue tonight will send a direct message.
Yeah. Councilperson Samuel?
The, we called ourselves the JPAC, Jeffersonville Public Art Committee, met this afternoon. And I'll try to send minutes out to the council. I haven't been doing that. I'll send the minutes out. So you guys know when we meet, kind of what we talked about. But just one of the things that was brought up today, we talked about a quote hip historic district. That was an artsy term, was not my term. And talking about utilizing the corner of Market and Spring where we have the ice skating rink, that parking lot, using that to have maybe on Saturdays afternoons, a, some type of a traveling art group to come in. Like they have mobile glass blowing. They have chainsaw guys that, you know, do art. They have all kinds of stuff that, that we can choose from. But, but besides have that, also have various vendors and food trucks and little carts, you know, the wheel carts in that area. Knowing that people are going to be coming across the Big Four, just another thing for them to stop at and observe while they're walking downtown. So we want to try to capitalize on that. And that's just one of the ideas that just kind of came out today. I would ask and announce that our next meeting, and I asked Scott if he would advertise this, June the 3rd at 3:00 PM, that's, June the 3rd at 3:00 PM up in the planning and zoning conference room. Also, I was talking with someone locally recently at a Rotary meeting and they, they asked me, we brought up the, they brought up the conversation of why cable TV does not scroll emergency warnings when there's like inclement weather, tornadoes close. They said that they do, local stations do, but not if you're watching Cooking Channel or whatever. And I thought, well, that's interesting. So I talked to Les Merkley. I said, since we have a, an agreement, a franchise agreement with Insight, can we make the request of them to any town there's inclement weather that would be advertised across the local stations, that they would run a banner across all local cable or stations? And I didn't bring the letter, but Les sent the letter. It was a very, very well-written letter. And we'll see if they will. I don't know if they can or will. But I just thought that was something that I'd make you aware of and I'll keep you posted on, on that. Dennis and I were able to attend last Monday morning, early, a, a meeting at ACL. There's, the Bell of Louisville is turning 100 in 2014. The Louisville side are planning a major five-day celebration. They want to try to equate it to some of the Thunder celebration. That's, that's what they're thinking. They're trying to get the Ogilwe Foundation involved. And the Ogilwe Foundation said, well, if you want us involved, you got to get Indiana folks involved, which was very good.
And Tall Stacks, you know, they were comparing it to Tall Stacks.
They're having, okay, they're having nine, the, the large steamboats will be coming in from all across the country for five days. One of them's going to be, I'll say parked, what do you, docked, moored, whatever, in Jeffersonville. So we'll have one on this side. And the other eight will be lined up along the river bank in Louisville. That's going to wind up being fall, I believe, of 2014. And we'll, there'll be more information about that. But it's exciting. It, it sounds like a fun festival. And we need to get Jeff kind of ramped up with that. I think we're trying to get the Steamboat Days aligned with that. So. So, just make you aware of that. And just kind of more of a frustration thing than anything, you know, tonight we approved close to three hundred thousand dollars of expenses. Originally, they were not appropriated. We came back and found out that some of them were a hundred-plus thousand dollars was. But it seems like at, at most ever meeting, we have department heads come up with these new ideas of how to use grant dollars that saves us money, which is part, part true, but it costs us a lot of money too. We didn't talk about the insurance, we didn't talk about the, well, that one officer we, we agreed to try to get, it's gonna cost us ninety-five thousand dollars, according to the old numbers that were mentioned. And I just, I just want to go back to my conversation with Amy. You know, we, we approved that before we approved the, the third reading of the cuts tonight. And so, we, you know, we know we have cuts, yet we still, if we vote against it, it feels like we're voting against our fire or police or our garbage folks or whomever. And it's, and we just have to go back and look at what money we have. So, I just, it was, I was frustrated that, that we, we continue to spend dollars that are not appropriated. And so, we'll have to go back and appropriate them and relook at that. So, I just, that's my last comment, Connie.
I have a couple of things. I know that Councilperson Smith, Smith spoke to me about an ordinance about the amount of spending we want to spend out of Lloyd for the police station. And if that's something that we need to do, is that something we need to have Scott prepare?
I think so, we need to clarify that.
Yeah, and.
And just most of the discussions that I've had, just, and I haven't talked to everybody, but just over the last several months was up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that would be our share and then the rest of it would be, I guess, TIF dollars or, it's a redevelopment project, so.
And for the record, I mean, I saw in the paper that a number of people in the administration said it's not, that the, that the low dollars were gonna pay for it. And we never, we never agreed to that, there was never a vote to that.
It was, in the paper, it said eight hundred thousand dollars of low-up money, which if we did, we, we would be broke because with, with the police cars and fire trucks and everything, we wouldn't even have money to fund a nine-one-one, but.
Right.
I got one more thing, I forgot, Connie, I'm sorry, when you get done. Is that, so is that okay with you guys?
You're bringing it up next, next meeting we'll bring it up?
Okay, make a, yeah, okay.
And then, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Steamboat Days Amonti Committee with Lisa, Sarah Schrute, several other people to get that, they're coming up with this big festival to work with the Louisville and they, they also brought up the Ogilvy Foundation and how we need to try to capture some of those.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, I wouldn't have said that.
That's okay, that's okay. So, just so you know that there's a group of people working on this, Main Street is on it and some other people. So, trying to get this because we want it to be a really good experience. And I think we're trying to get the arts community involved and possibly have them by the walking bridge and it'll be really nice.
I just got one more thing, I forgot, I'm sorry. Everybody is aware, most of you are aware, we had a nine-one-one meeting last week, week before at the mayor's conference room, it was a, it was a packed house. Representatives from all over Clark County were there, police, fire, EMS, communities, towns. And they basically are gonna break it down into what they call Steering Committee. And the Steering Committee would consist of nine participants. And basically, that, they're just gonna get together and tweak out some things, but obviously, it'll come back to the full council or town board members or whatever. The city of Jeffersonville has an opportunity to have two people on this committee. One would be on the executive branch with mayor and then the legislation branch. And I'm asking if the council would support me representing you all on this Steering Committee as we work towards our, our nine-one-one consolidation. The meetings are open, you're allowed to attend, I mean, it's not that you can't attend, but it would be my responsibility to attend the meetings. And we have one of them next month, starting next month. So, just, I'm asking for your support or whatever we need to do to move forward on that.
I make a motion, we appoint Mike as our point of contact on that nine-one-one Steering Committee.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to appoint Mike Smith on the nine-one-one Steering Committee. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, sorry, I forgot.